We'll fill them in. Got thumbs up from the welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. Today is Tuesday, January 24th. We're nine thirty-three. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of regular meeting of January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on the minutes, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do indeed have it. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items one through ten.
Does every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on a consent agenda, then I will make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is consecutive by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do indeed have it. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
Chair recognizes Mr. Gary Jansen.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The petitions for your consideration today include signatures representing a hundred percent of each improvement district in a valid per Kansas statute. Pike Edition, Pike Third and Fourth Edition, Phases One through Eight in District Five include water, drainage, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements. And that's all we have for you today. Staff recommends council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there questions for staff? None? Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If there is no discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new amending resolutions, and authorize necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Approval of revised travel for Vice Mayor Hoheisel to attend Local Government Day.
Is there any discussion on the approval? Vice Mayor Hoheisel? Still going, right?
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll make the motion to accept the recommended action to approve the revised travel. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is consecutive by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for councilmembers Blue Vaughn Johnson to attend the Industry and Defense Program, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, in Fort Worth, Texas.
Is there any discussion on the item? If there's no discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the travel. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Let's open up with appointments. I will be appointing Erica Sawyer to the Library Board, Jesse Romo to the Kansas Aviation Museum Board, and Lucia Sherman to the Parks Board appointment to acknowledge the Park Board's appointment to the Sustainability Board. Is there any other appointments or acknowledgements of appointments? If not, that is my motion, and a second would be in order.
Second.
Motion is second by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Back on comments. Are there comments for the good of the body? Councilmember Ballard.
Yes, this Saturday, we're having our District Six Coffee at Evergreen from nine to ten. The new Police Chief Sullivan will be there, and we'll have just some snacks and treats, and should be a good time. Also, on Thursday at Evergreen, as well, at six o'clock, we're doing a big community update on where they are and what the ideas are for all of the research that they've done for the Nomar area districts. Anyone that's interested would invite them to join us.
Excellent. Thank you. Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then we will recess the official meeting to get into our workshop, because following the meeting, we will have, or towards the end of the meeting, we will have a motion to go into executive session. So we won't officially be closing out the meeting. Instead, we're just going to recess for the workshop, and we'll come back into the meeting before we make the motion. So with that, we're at recess. The chair recognizes City Manager Layton for the start of the council workshop.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a busy workshop agenda for you today. The first item is a status report on the progress that has been made on the Healthy Corner Store Initiative. And I believe we have some speakers that are joining us remotely, Eileen Horn, who you've worked with before, and a few others to give us that status report. Eileen, are you leading it off? You're showing who's muted.
Turn on mute.
Ms. Horn, can you hear us?
Eileen, can you?
Yeah. Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am. It's great seeing you again.
Hi, everybody. We're so excited to be here today. Quick tech question. Would you like me to share our slides, or would you all like to manage that in the room?
You share your slides.
Okay, great. Give me one second. It's giving me a permission issue. Juan, are you able to share the slide deck easily? Or Caroline, are you able to do it?
Give it a try.
Okay.
I have it on a PDF if you cannot, but it won't show you your faces, but.
That would be okay.
Yeah, give that a try. I'm having trouble as well.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Teams just doesn't like my setup.
Okay, it's up on the screen, and I'll move the slides as you need them.
Okay, I really appreciate it. Thanks for troubleshooting. So again, it's so good to be in front of you all today. We're excited to present the progress we've made on the Healthy Corner Store Initiative project. And just to kind of set the stage a little bit, we're, I would say we're about three quarters of the way through the project. So we've done a lot of the community engagement, all of the research, and we have a set of preliminary recommendations. But what I want to just reemphasize is that we're really open to your feedback and looking forward to the conversation today. So please, you know, bring us your feedback, your questions. We want to use that feedback to help refine the final product. So let's kick it off. Next slide, please. We're just going to go through a quick background reminder of how we got here, and then I'm going to hand it over to Juan, and he's going to talk in more detail about the elements of the project, in particular, that we think are going to make it into our recommendations. Next slide. So a little bit of background about how we got here. As you all know, throughout two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, our team at New Venture Advisors worked with the YMCA of Greater Wichita and the City of Wichita and Cedric County to create a food system master plan. And there was extensive community engagement throughout that process, also really interesting timing with the pandemic that really, I think, highlighted the vulnerabilities of our food system. And that plan resulted in three major goals, one of which was to improve access to healthy food. And as you all know, there has been a lot of discussion in the city over the years about the issue of food deserts in the city of Wichita and the lack of access to healthy food that some residents experience. So one of the key actions that came out of that plan was to work with existing small grocers and convenience stores to incentivize and enable them to stock fresh, healthy food options. The thinking behind this and the community feedback we received is that the community was interested in quicker solutions than waiting for grocery store development, and also recognized the need to partner with existing businesses and the desire to support existing neighborhood business outlets. Next slide, please. So then, in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, as you all recall, there were some well-publicized and really disappointing grocery closures that brought this issue to the forefront again. And our team at New Venture Advisors was brought on board again to help the city think through some potential solutions to the closure of those grocery stores and to think creatively about some potential solutions, especially because at that point, we knew that ARPA funds were going to be available to the city and the county. So what our team assisted with was looking at some case studies of potential solutions, and also you all had received some proposals from community members who had ideas about how to address the food desert issues. And so you asked us to analyze and comment on those as well. So what we ended up recommending was that we felt like the Healthy Corner Store Initiative model was a great fit for the city and the city's goals, and also aligned well with the intent of the ARPA dollars, which, as you all know, you know, is a one-time source of funds, but with a program like HCSI allows us to build some infrastructure that will last long past the one-time federal funds. So you can see the recommendations from that report on the right-hand side. Next slide. And so that led us to today. This is the Healthy Corner Store Initiative Pilot Project Planning Project that we've been in the middle of. As you can see, we started off looking at peer cities to learn best practices and lessons learned. We convened a steering committee, and I'm going to talk about a little bit more later, that was instrumental in providing really great grounded community feedback about the program. We've been working closely with finance to create an ARPA-compliant budget for the project. And as I said, we're right here at implementation plan development. So we're pulling together all the pieces based on what we heard from community feedback and from best practices in other programs. And as a reminder, the project and what we learned from you all and heard from the City Manager's Office was that, you know, there isn't a clear Department of Food in the city who's going to take on implementation of a Healthy Corner Store Initiative. So the route that was chosen was to send out a request for proposals to invite partners in the city to apply for being the recipient of the ARPA funds and the implementer of the Healthy Corner Store program. So we'll work closely with the city to draft that RFP, and if you all want us to, we can participate in vendor review and selection. So our hope is to get that RFP out in March of this year. Okay, next slide. So as a reminder about our teams, again, I'm Eileen with New Venture Advisors. We have Caroline Larran from NVA also on the call today. And although we are food system nerds through and through, the Food Trust really brings the expertise of the Healthy Corner Store Initiative program. They created the model, and they have implemented it across the country. So Juan and Nissa from the Food Trust team are on the call today, and they've been great partners throughout. And I also just want to thank city staff. We have had really phenomenal participation from the City Manager's Office, IT, GIS folks, MAPD, finance, community development. I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but there's been really great support from city staff, and so I just want to publicly thank them for their partnership. Next slide. So here we are in the timeline, again, wrapping up the project, but excited to get additional feedback from you all today. Next slide. Back one more. Think up two more now. There we go. Okay. So a little bit about the steering committee, which is that, the next slide. So it says, there we go, perfect. So at the beginning of the project, we recognized the need for this to be grounded in community feedback and input, and worked closely with the city and partners to recruit a steering committee. We had twenty-five representatives from small, they were store owners, distributors, healthy food access nonprofits. We had extension. We had the Health Department. We had lots of city staff participation, small business organizations, et cetera. And convened them three times. So what they did is they established the goals for the program that have shaped where we've headed. Juan walked them through all the different possible model pieces that other cities and entities use that implement HCSI, and they helped us to prioritize which would be the best fit for the city of Wichita. And then this last meeting just two weeks ago, GIS walked them through a phenomenal map they made, showing all of the food access challenges in the cities, and also all the opportunities where store owners are currently, and they helped us identify some key census tracts to do the pilot rollout in. So they were, like I said, fantastic, and we're really grateful for their participation. So I'm going to hand it over to Juan, and Juan is going to talk you through the particulars of the program, and then we'll be happy to entertain discussion and questions.
Thanks, Eileen. Hi, everybody. I'm Juan from the Food Trust. Happy to be here with you today. So as Eileen mentioned, these were some of the program goals that were established during the steering committee meeting that we had. So these are actually established during the very first meeting and are sort of the guiding principles that folks felt were necessary in order to have a successful Healthy Corner Store program in Wichita. So as you can see, some of the focus of these goals are around access and affordability of healthy food, making sure that that food is culturally appropriate, also increasing the number of corner stores that accept SNAP or WIC, as well as the number of households in Wichita participating in those programs. Another goal was to improve knowledge around nutrition and healthy eating to help improve the health outcomes of Wichita residents, as well as supporting the local food economy and making sure that we're connecting with local farmers in order to really support their business. And the last goal was to really sustain and grow these efforts through partnerships with neighborhood residents, community organizations, and the store owners themselves. Next slide, please. So after the multiple Model City interviews that Eileen mentioned, we kind of came up with this list of the key elements that practitioners around the country were identifying as sort of the key elements that were really led to successful programs. So I'll just sort of walk through these one by one and explain a little bit about what they mean in terms of the corner store environment. So the first one is advanced distribution support, which really refers to the way that corner store owners purchase and bring in healthy items into their store. So in many cases, the distribution system is really not set up in a way that is accessible to small stores. A lot of times distributors have large minimum order requirements, or they require that store owners buy entire cases of produce, which in a lot of, you know, cases, the owner can't sell before it spoils. So many of the model cities that we spoke with really focused on providing distribution support to make it easier for these small stores to source fresh produce, either by working with existing distribution channels and negotiating on behalf of the stores, or creating an entirely new system that was meant to serve the needs of the small stores. The next element is store equipment upgrades, and that refers to equipment such as shelving, baskets, refrigeration, that stores might need in order to really properly store and display fresh produce. So in a lot of cases, corner stores don't really have the right equipment to keep produce at the proper temperature, or they might be using things like cardboard boxes that really don't create an attractive display that customers, you know, see and really want to buy the produce. So many of the programs we spoke with provide this equipment to stores free of charge on the condition that it can only be used for approved healthy items. In-store marketing materials refers to the materials that are placed in stores, such as shelf talkers, banners, or signs, and they help direct customers towards the healthier choices in the store, and it also helps inform their product purchasing decisions. So many of the programs we spoke with, they place these materials around the store as part of the overall store conversion process, and it really helps highlight the new products that the stores introduce. It also makes it more likely for customers to notice and purchase those products. Nutrition incentives refers to programs such as Double Up Food Bucks, which many of you might be familiar with at farmer's markets or at larger grocery stores, and that really allows customers to purchase products at a lower price. In many cases, those programs are linked to SNAP benefits, and they allow customers to essentially double their money on produce that's purchased with their SNAP benefits. Other types of nutrition incentive programs include coupons or programs like Fruit and Veggie RX, which provide customers with either free or reduced-cost produce. Store owner training is the support that we provide to stores in order to help them in their efforts to become healthier. So in many cases, those trainings take the form of direct one-on-one training sessions with the store owner on a variety of topics, such as produce display or tips on how to, you know, set up their produce, or what temperature to, you know, is the ideal temperature to keep products at. The trainings can also focus on how stores can apply to become WIC or SNAP vendors. So in a lot of cases, we'll help them actually go through the application process and walk them through how to become a WIC or SNAP vendor. Community engagement are the efforts that programs really make to involve community and to raise awareness about the changes happening in the stores. So a lot of times this happens through connecting with other local organizations to get the word out about programming, and even by hiring residents from within the neighborhoods where the stores are located to talk with their neighbors and to provide store owners with that direct feedback from what residents would like to see introduced to the stores. And finally, nutrition education is the efforts program make to inform customers about healthy eating. So those sometimes happen directly in the store through quick informal classes that customers can participate in as they're shopping. And you can even link these classes with other types of health screening. So we've had partners, healthcare partners, that actually come into the store and provide blood pressure or BMI checks to customers that are also participating in our nutrition lessons. So it sort of provides that overall health service. Next slide, please. So as Eileen mentioned, during the steering committee that we convened, this was actually during the second steering committee, we presented all of these different elements of corner store programs and what practitioners around the country had sort of said were some of the key elements, and we actually asked people to vote on what they thought were the most important elements to include in the Wichita Healthy Corner Store program. So as you can see, folks really thought that distribution support and community outreach and engagement were sort of the key places that we should focus our efforts. And they also saw, you know, value in including some of these other elements, so we tried to incorporate all of them as much as possible. Next slide, please. So this all really leads us to the following recommendations that we're making. So just to start off with the number one element that folks thought was important, so the advanced distribution support for stores. So we actually met with current distributors and organizations that are serving Wichita and that already do large-scale produce distribution. So that included folks like CNC Produce, Common Grounds, and the Kansas Food Bank. And after these discussions, we came up with the following potential solutions, one of which was to actually rent a refrigerated truck and place that at a site where corner store owners can either conveniently pick up fresh produce or have another organization that actually redistributes out that produce and delivers it to the owner. The other recommendation was working with the existing food distribution organizations that we spoke with, some of which might actually have infrastructure and extra staff that can coordinate pickup or delivery orders for store owners. Next slide, please. The other area of focus was the in-store support. So we actually met individually with some of the store owners that were part of the steering committee, just to sort of pick their brain and find, figure out like what was important for them and what they thought was sort of the key to helping them become healthier corner stores. So in a lot of cases, we heard from the owners that they really needed help with the equipment. So some owners were using, you know, actual like home refrigerators or, you know, things that weren't meant to be in a store to store fresh produce. So they, you know, really needed that help with refrigeration and shelving that was meant for fresh produce. The other element was the training for store owners. So the owners definitely seemed interested in receiving some of that direct one-on-one training, and particularly around how to become a WIC vendor. So actually walking through that process for applying for WIC and getting their store set up to accept WIC. Next slide, please. The last element that we focused on was community engagement. So again, a high level of investment here. We met with residents and community organizations and really came up with these solutions based on those meetings. So one of which was to actually hire community ambassadors or folks that are from within the neighborhoods where the stores are located to assist with the resident outreach and the program implementation, so to be that direct link between residents and the store owners. And the other one was to actually conduct some of these in-store nutrition education classes to include the health screenings with healthcare providers if possible, and to provide customers with incentives for purchasing healthy products such as Double Up Food Bucks. Next slide, please. So that's sort of an overview of all the different elements and things that we're hoping to include in the implementation plan. I'll go ahead and pass it back to Eileen to sort of go over some of the next steps and recommendations. Thank you all.
Thanks, Juan. So as I said at our final steering committee meeting, we shared this map created by City GIS staff and worked through this map with the steering committee members to identify the neighborhoods for the pilot project. We can share this link with you. It's open, and it's really fun to click on and off all of the layers. But what we did is we mapped where the existing food deserts are. So where are those low-income, low-access neighborhoods? We also looked at in kind of the pink and red areas, those are census tracts with low access to vehicle. That's another important consideration when thinking about utilizing the existing convenience stores that maybe folks can walk to. So we included those two layers, and then GIS helped us map all of the grocery stores, all of the convenience stores, anybody that had a tobacco license, a cereal, malt beverage license, a liquor license, we have them all in here. Also, dollar stores, everybody is mapped. And so you can turn on and off the different layers and see where the need is, and then also where the opportunity is in terms of density of store owners who may want to participate. So we shared this with the steering committee, and they helped us identify some key census tracts that they were interested in. Those are identified with the little blue markers, in case you don't have the census tracts of your district memorized. So the census tracts are listed there, and then those were some of the neighborhoods that folks were, or I'm sorry, the census tracts that folks were really interested in reaching through the pilot program. Our, some additional information for you, what we're thinking in terms of kind of a sustainable growth of the program, because that was another key interest of the steering committee, was to make sure that, you know, the program is built over time. We anticipate being able to do six stores in year one, and technically, year one is going to be the second half of two thousand and twenty-three. So thinking we could recruit and get six stores up and running by the end of two thousand and twenty-three, and then in year two, add twelve more stores. So we only projected the pilot through two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, because ARPA funds have to be allocated by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. But we also went ahead to just, you know, to share with the organization who takes this on additional projections past those two years of how they may sustain and grow the program. So that's what we're anticipating, is that by the end of year two, December two thousand and twenty-four, we would have eighteen stores. Um, so that's what we're anticipating is that by the end of year two, December 2024, we would have 18 stores in the program. Um, and initial outreach would begin in these census tracts that you see identified with the blue markers. But um, this doesn't mean that only stores in those census tracts will get to participate. It was really to help us focus on um, you know, giving some guidance to the organization that takes us on about where outreach should begin. But really, I mean, as Juan and Nissa have said a hundred times in this project, it's the willingness of store owners and their enthusiasm that makes this successful. So if there is a store owner somewhere else in the city that is excited to join, we will absolutely recommend that, um, that they're part of the program. Um, okay. So I think that is our last slide and we are happy to field any questions you have um about, about the program as it stands right now, about where our recommendations are, et cetera.
Couple. Um, thank you guys for the presentation. Thank you for all the work you've done on, on this so far. Um, I remember in earlier plans, there was talk about reaching out to Dollar Stores, Dollar General, Family Dollar. Um, is that still in consideration and have we heard anything back?
They're, they're a tough nut to crack. Um, we've found, and maybe Juan, you can speak to this, but um, our understanding is that most of the programs that we spoke with. Um, hadn't, hadn't had much success reaching out to those stores. Um, but if, if there is any kind of local control, we would love to talk to somebody in Wichita. We just weren't able to track down. Um, any local manager that had the kind of, you know, um, influence to be able to commit the organization or the company to participating.
Okay.
Yeah, as I mentioned, oh, sorry. Um, yeah, I was, I was just gonna add that many times when we've reached out to dollar stores or some of these larger corporate chains. We kind of get stuck within the management system. So, you know, we'll usually get in touch with a manager or a regional manager, but not able to move beyond that. Um, so as I mentioned, definitely we're, we're open to that, um, especially if folks know of somebody that we could talk to that's a decision maker at one of those organizations.
Okay. Um, thank you for that response. Um, are, about what percentage of the fresh produce are we planning on buying locally?
That's, that's a great question. One of the things we're still figuring out with finance in the budget is what, if we can purchase any food in the program. Cause what we'd like to do is make it as easy as possible for these store owners to sign on. And one of the ways we can do that is help mitigate the risk that they might feel about stocking produce if they don't have any proof that their customers have been interested in that in the past. Um, so that's one of the things we're still puzzling through and what we'd like to do is I saw Donna, um, Pearson-Mickelish in the audience and others. Is we would as much as possible like to buy from local food distributors like Donna to get to create that pipeline. So that the store owners can buy, um, can buy locally. Um, also, as Juan mentioned, um, CNC Produce was the distributor we spoke to and we spoke to them specifically because they are, um, they're the distributor in Kansas. Who I think has the most experience working with local farms and they're willing to go that extra, um, to do that extra work that it takes to work with local farmers. And um, so we had some great conversations with them and they're definitely interested, um, and already do deliveries in Wichita. So thank you for that question, cause that was an important value that came through from the steering committee and one thing that we're really excited about, uh, cause it builds the whole food system.
All right.
We don't have a percentage set yet and if that would be helpful, we could work on something like that.
I appreciate that. One more question. Um, has it been given any consideration for having the local markets, the small markets perhaps? Um, have a collaboration to buy um some of the food product in bulk? That way it spreads the cost out, um, makes it a little cheaper, cheaper for them?
Yeah, Juan, you want to take that one? I know you've talked about that model a lot.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so we usually call that the hub and spoke, spoke model where one store will either, you know, purchase larger, um, you know, bulk quantity of produce and redistribute out to other stores. Or what we're actually recommending in this case is um that we, we actually create this new distribution model where that produce is aggregated at a, a point. And then store owners can then purchase that produce um from that um aggregation point. Um, so it, it's sort of achieved that same goal of um being able to buy produce in bulk and then redistribute it out to the store owners at a cheaper cost.
Okay, thank you.
Just got one question about um waste. I know that's a big deal with um fresh fruits and vegetables. You guys have something laid out in, in your process to, to eliminate waste or to some, some kind of recycle or, or getting it out there for homeless? Or getting it out there to the zoo? Um, Councilman Ballard had mentioned that to me. Just curious what that looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. So actually the first um way that we try to help stores um avoid waste is to create some value-added products from um some of the produce that might be near expiration. So a lot of times those brown bananas are really great for making smoothies. Um, or store owners can kind of cut up produce if they have a food handling license and actually create fruit salads and other value-added products that way. Um, and another thing that we've heard from other organizations and I think in particular, um, Cambie's Markets um in Kansas City is that they donate a lot of that produce that isn't able to sell to other organizations. Um, so sort of, sort of finding ways that we can um prevent some of that waste uh and get that produce out to those that might need it.
Had um, I had a couple of questions. Um, also a couple of comments. Um, CNC Produce was just mentioned about their experience uh through the state, but I just want to continue to highlight the Common Ground has that same experience here. Over 30 delivery sites in Cedric County and two surrounding counties. So I want to keep that in mind. Also, comment was made that we would open this up to any store owner that, that wants it. And I just want to continue to challenge us to focus on those census tr- census tracts. That's where the most need is at. And although other folks might be open to that, I, I think just with this small amount of money, a million dollars, we should focus on the census tracts that have the most need. So just some thoughts on that. Also reading through here of the priorities, I didn't see a whole lot of nutritional education. One of my concerns would be that we find a way to provide access to produce, but we're talking about uh communities that traditionally don't have that access. So in going from chips and ramen noodles to knowing how to prepare Brussels sprouts and salads and things like that. There needs to be some form of education in that outreach on how to prepare those meals in a way that tastes good, that don't over saturate with unhealthy stuff. So is that a part of the community engagement piece?
Absolutely. Um, so Adrian, uh, the director of the health department was a participant in the steering committee. And the resource that she offered and um I think is, is a really good fit is that they already have navigators um in the health department. They already have an infrastructure of WIC educators. And so what we were talking about with uh, with Adrian was how do we leverage the existing um capacity of the health department? To direct some of that nutritional education, some of that outreach to the stores and to the shoppers at the stores. Um, so that, um, I think that's an interesting opportunity, but also depending on who, who responds to the RFP. There may be an organization that bids on this, that wants to do this project that has built-in health educators. Um, so I think you all have a lot of infrastructure in that way and I think there are organizations we can um tap into to partner. Um, one more thing about that RFP, we um, we really think it, it would be a great, um, you know, kind of happy ending to the project. If there were multiple people on a proposal, um, because some of them have different scales, right? Common Ground is an excellent distributor, as an example. Um, the health department has that outreach capability. Um, so we, you know, we encouraged steering committee members to, to get together to start the conversation. Um, and you know, I think that would be a good solution is to have the, the um organizing entity bring in multiple partners with different skills. Because this is, um, this is a new program in the city and it might um take a couple of partners to pull it off.
Awesome. Will the RFP be broken down um to the folks who are looking for funds as well as like another RFP for community ambassadors or is that all one?
Um, the way we pictured the, the way we've mapped out the budget thus far is that the community ambassadors would be hired by the entity that, that runs the program. Um, so thus far we've been envisioning it as one RFP, but we haven't met with finance to talk through the details of that. That, that meeting is actually tomorrow. Um, so we'll know more about what can be done within the city structure. Um, but we would, yeah, we would definitely encourage partnership on this.
Okay. Yeah, I think partnership with some of our local clinics would be pretty cool with that. Uh, last question, you know, after this investment, you talked about it a little bit, but what are the plans for sustainability? You know, if we do get local folks to do it, I think they're willing and, and able to try to make this continue on. But if there's the dollar type stores we were talking about, I don't really see that sustaining long-term. Has there been more thought to that?
Yeah, one of the, um, one of the exciting developments that occurred during this time is that, um, one of the uh healthcare organizations. Who um is interested in serving Kansans and um is interested in growing in this market, reached out to us. A lot of the, the organizations, especially the managed care organizations that facilitate the Medicaid program in the state of Kansas. Um, many of them are looking into uh veggie and fruit prescription programs, looking into healthy corner store initiatives. As ways to support um the health of their, of their members and of their Medicaid members. And so, um, actually very early in the process, uh, a member at um Elevance reached out to Juan and has already offered funding for the program. Um, that we've built into the budget. So we feel really uh confident that this is an idea that is really, it's taking off nationally. There's a lot of funder interest. Um, and so we, we feel pretty good that if we can use the ARPA dollars to build out that infrastructure and to, you know, get the equipment going, get the distribution set up. That that will um make it easier for an organization to, to run the program in the future with, um, you know, private funds um or, or corporate donations.
Have, have you had the opportunity to um visit with Montel Farms in Southwest Woodshaw?
No, what was the name of the farm again?
Montel.
No, I haven't. Can you connect us with them?
Yeah, yep, yep, absolutely. Um, Councilmember Ballard, I think you, you've been through their facility down there, Seneca and May. And it sounds like they're doing a lot of this already. And whenever we talk about getting local product and stuff out there and, and I, I, I think it'd be a great, great connection if we can put that together.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, as much as you all can help when the RFP comes out to direct that to the businesses and the organizations in your districts, that, that's great. We would love a, we would love a robust response.
Eileen, I just want to thank you and your group and the Food Trust and the Health and Wellness Coalition and the Steering Committee and everyone who's been involved in this. This has been a labor of love of mine for a long time and it's so exciting to see it come to fruition and super um excited for the city of Wichita to be involved in this work as well as Cedric County. Um, I just wanted to maybe make a few comments. Um, Councilmember Johnson, you brought up a great point about community outreach and community engagement. And I know the health department has navigators and they're certainly going to be a valuable asset, but also the Health and Wellness Coalition has been doing exactly that for almost two decades. So utilizing the Health and Wellness Coalition and their extensive network, uh, I think could also be important work to make sure that we keep connected. The Health and Wellness Coalition was the genesis of this master food plan and now this next phase. So making sure that we keep them engaged. Regarding um sustainability also, as mentioned, one of the things that I've said pretty consistently through this process is. I am extremely excited that the city is allocating ARPA funds for this, but I've been hesitant the entire time about purchase of food. Just because of the sustainability aspect. I do understand that for some retailers, it would be good for them to maybe have a small amount of, of access to resources to purchase food. So that they can get into the system, understand the process, know how much to purchase, um, risk avoidance, right? But um really, I think more of the money that can be invested in infrastructure and capital programs is, is going to be important to me. Um, just because of the sustainability at, at point. We only have a small amount of resources and a small amount of time, but we want to see this work continue in the future. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Warren, I just have a quick follow-up question. For the six new stores recruited and converted during year one, I assume that it, this is my question. I don't want to assume. Uh, do we actually know those six stores are willing to participate? Have, have we talked to them or is the goal just to find six stores? I'm just interested to know how far along we are in that.
Yeah, we've had, um, so we had three store owners participate in the steering committee and I think they were all interested in implementing the program. I don't want to speak for them, but I think there was definite um enthusiasm and interest there. But no, we haven't identified the exact stores. It's, it's been a funny chicken and egg. Since we're not going to implement the program, we want to make sure that we, you know, we give a lot of the control to the organization that is gonna implement the Healthy Corner Store project. And, you know, selecting the stores seems like something that they should, um, that they should lead on.
Okay, so the six and then 12 additional, that's more of an aspirational goal at this point. We still got work to do to line those up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I feel like they're really realistic, given the number of, of outlets that you all have in the city. That those felt to us, um, once we mapped all the possibilities, felt like really reasonable targets.
Further questions?
Yeah, I've got one more. Um, this refrigerated truck rental kind of reminded me a little bit of Freight Farms. So if someone was to make a proposal that potentially invested in like a high tunnel, so uh just a garden that they can continually use. Instead of just having a refrigerator truck, that could be a site folks could come purchase food, grab food. They could also pick up food and distribute somewhere else. Would that be something that's acceptable or, or not?
That's, that's interesting. I don't know, Juan, do you have many, many models where the production is also happening at uh one of the partner sites?
Not that I know of. It definitely would be a unique model and I think something that we'd be open to, um, especially if they're already doing some of the work there. Um, it would make sense to sort of, um, yeah, to add that element.
So if you look at the North Market in Minneapolis, um, that was kind of what they did. So when we talked with the Dare Mosley. There are several ways that they supply their stores and community with food. One of them is gardens. Um, I didn't see a high tunnel in there, but a high tunnel would work in Wichita, given our weather and how it changes. So I would hope that something like that would be open and available on this proposal as well.
Yeah. Yeah, we're excited about the, um, rather than building up a separate distribution infrastructure. We're excited about the idea of how can we rent a refrigerated semi-trailer that sits at an existing site that is already either producing local food or receiving shipments of local food. And where folks, um, and organizations already have that distribution know-how. Uh, Brian Walker with the Kansas Food Bank was on the steering committee and was really helpful in thinking through um how that distribution occurs currently. And how something like a Healthy Corner Store Initiative program might fit into that as well. So I think you'll have a lot of options. You have a lot of infrastructure in the city and a lot of enthusiastic partners. Um, the steering committee was great and we're so happy that they shared their wisdom and expertise with us.
Further questions? See none. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. And just because Councilmember Johnson said it, we're not necessarily buying Brussels sprouts.
We gotta roast them.
We want things people will eat. Anyway.
Little bit of oil, salt and pepper.
Can we also, Bob?
There's still Brussels sprouts.
Possibly look into, uh, and I'm just throwing this out there in case we don't find those 18 stores in the next two years that are willing to participate. Uh, can we also take a look at uh practices in other cities that have utilized um recreation centers, uh, other community centers as, as well? I know that we have a uh Empower Evergreen, we, we paid, uh, I think a grand over a million dollars for a community kitchen. There might be an opportunity there. Uh, so I, just wondering if, if we can also have additional uh information on, on ways we could address this, maybe a layered approach as we move forward if.
Yes, Mayor. And I think some of that research was done early on as well, so.
Excellent.
Okay. Ready for the next item?
Yes.
Next item is a report from the Diversity, Inclusion, Civil Rights Advisory Board about their strategic work program. Uh, Pastor Pam Hughes-Mason is going to uh start the presentation uh regarding the uh work of the, the board. And a cast of thousands.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board would like to present our strategic work plan. Currently, there are nine members serving on the board. As said, I'm Pastor Pam and I am the chair of the board. We would also like to thank those persons who have previously served on our board. Also, special acknowledgements to the PPMC, to city staff. Today for our overview of our strategic plan, we'll talk about the timeline, the background, the collaborative approach. Strategy plan, goals, and strategic, strategic plan, goals, and strategies. Talent retention, attraction, and advancement, equity and policy programs and services, community engagement and partnership. And then we'll look ahead and talk about next steps. Our background. Actually, we'll go to the timeline first. Our timeline. In July of 2021, we were tasked with evaluating the non-discrimination ordinance. August through October 2021, we engaged the community and provided recommendations to the mayor and city council. to the mayor and city council. November 2021, we began looking at foundational needs of the board. January through March 2022, we worked on establishing foundational documents such as bylaws and electing officers. March through May 2022, we heard from the city council, we heard from, we heard updates from city council officials and on their efforts as far as diversity, inclusion. I'll start that again. March through May 2022, we heard updates from city council officials on diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts and progress. June through November 2022, we developed a strategic plan, work plan. January 2023, we are here today to present that work plan to the mayor and city council. In the summer of 22, 2020, the mayor created an ad hoc task force on diversity, inclusion, and civil rights. This task force recommended establishing the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Advisory Board by city ordinance. In December of 2022, this ordinance was approved by the city council. In June of 2021, board members were officially appointed. The Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board is inclusive of residents from each district as well as appointments made by the mayor. The board is designed to be diverse and represent as many divisions of the community as possible. The purpose of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board is to make recommendations to the mayor and city council on strategies to engage Wichita's diverse residents, businesses, and community leaders. Throughout our work, it has been the collaborative approach. City departments presented to the board current work being done in matters related to diversity, equity, and inclusion to inform this plan's creation. The plan was created with the intent for our board to work in collaboration with the city council, city staff, and to accomplish this work. And now I will present to you Angela.
The work group, so I'm Angela Brier. I was appointed by Brian Fry for District Five. I worked on the area of talent retention, attraction, and advancement, so we'll walk through the goals and then the strategies within each of those goals. So the first goal was to develop and implement procedures to foster an inclusive organizational culture that encourages the hiring of diverse talent reflecting the demographics of the community. And within there, there's three, three strategies. The first one is develop and distribute an internal climate survey to assess city employees' perceptions of organizational culture, including diversity, equity, and inclusion strategies. And then under that, there's develop strategy and process for distributing to every staff member on an annual basis to evaluate progress. And then provide the board with an annual report of the survey results, strategy, and action steps to respond to employee feedback. The survey results and plans should also influence the development of the equity lens and the equity focused area, which is Goal One, Strategies Two, and Three, which you'll hear later. The second strategy is to conduct a DEI audit that assesses language and job descriptions, hiring and advancement processes, strategies for attraction, retention, and advancement of underrepresented employees, and then upon completion of that audit, implement solutions to make improvements. And the third strategy is to expand external partnerships with colleges and universities, for example, or professional organizations that can be utilized to attract diverse talent. For Goal Two, it's create programs, policies, and benefits that retain diverse talent at the city. Under this, there are six strategies, but one builds off of the other. The first one is address barriers to employee advancement identified through the DEI audit. The second one, establish employee resource groups that build networks, enhance career development, and contribute to personal development. The third one is to create a partnership directory and connect with organizations using employee resource groups to build a workplace culture focused on DEI. The fourth one, evaluate and enhance benefits such as tuition reimbursement, paid leave, to meet the needs of all employees, creating a competitive advantage for attracting diverse talent. The fifth one, evaluate existing policies and procedures that allow staff to identify and report discrimination. And the sixth one, identify DEI competencies to include an employee performance evaluation to ensure individual accountability for achieving organizational goals. And the third goal, create transparent pathways, professional development, and encourage processes for all staff to advance within departments and across the organization to increase diversity at all levels. There's two strategies under this section. The first one is create and implement a formal employee mentoring program for underrepresented talent that provides opportunities to interact with leadership and gain support for career development and advancement. And then the second one is create mandatory ongoing DEI education and training for management and supervisory staff, provide voluntary opportunities for all staff. And then the measurement plan for this, the city will partner with the board to develop a report card on the city's progress on DEI goals for talent, attraction, retention, and development. This report will be shared with the mayor and city council. Year one will serve as a baseline, year with progress goals defined for the next two years. Next, I'll let Veronica take it over.
Good morning. My name is Veronica Gillette, and I'm a mayor appointed, and I will be speaking on our equity and policies, programs, and services. So our Goal One includes designing and implementing an annual review of city policies, processes, and procedures to ensure that city Wichita staff administers inclusive and equitable practices for all. The strategies with this include developing an equity lens to evaluate policies, programs, and procedures. The lens will guide the annual review of personnel processes and be used to evaluate city programs and services such as housing, transportation, accessibility to services, and more. We'd also be partnering with the DI Crab to create a report card to measure the city's progress on fostering inclusivity and diversity within their workforce, and evaluate and create an equitable process to support a supplier diversity program that advances small businesses and supports economic prosperity. The second goal would be to require city staff to intentionally foster inclusivity in program development, service delivery, and community engagement. The strategies for this goal include partner with DI Crab to evaluate how the citizen survey is utilized and identify opportunities to engage the community to influence policies, practices, and programs. Identify opportunities for the city to work with external organizations on strategies and programs to build thriving communities, and enhance the city's outreach efforts with diverse groups. The measurement plan for this will be using the developed report card on the city's progress on DEI goals for equity and policy, programs, and processes. Year one will serve as a baseline with progress goals defined for the next two years. All right, now we'll have Valerie speaking.
My name is Valerie White, and I am the District One representative appointed by Councilmember Brandon Johnson. Under the community engagement and partnerships, we have three main goals. Goal One is developing programming to increase a sense of community for youth and young adults through civic engagement and opportunities. Goal Two is engage underrepresented groups to inform about city services and governance. Goal Three, to identify and create opportunities to engage in consistent, transparent discussions that drive positive change in communities. The strategy and the descriptions of those strategies under Goal One, there's four. The first one is to collaborate with the community partners who serve youth and young adults to enhance engagement in public service and inform on public issues. The second strategy is to partner with schools and post-secondary institutions and community organizations to first expand DEI opportunities and also to develop a city resource guide for youth and young adults to engage in public service opportunities. The third strategy under Goal One is to create and implement a mentor for a day program that allows young adults and youth to learn about roles in public service. The fourth and last strategy under Goal One is to proactively engage youth and young adults in board appointments and civic engagement opportunities. Moving on to Goal Two, we have three strategies. The first strategy is to review information and language of government processes and services to ensure accessibility and conduct an annual internal review for accountability. The second strategy is to create a tool on the city's website that invites community organizations to register to receive information from the city on opportunities to discuss important issues, decisions, and access to resources. Use the tool to ensure that city staff intentionally connects with community organizations. The third and last strategy under Goal Two is to develop and implement programs that provide employees with the opportunity to civically engage and support other organizations and cultural community activities. And moving down to Goal Three and its strategies, the first one is to partner with DI Crab to convene community town halls to discuss city findings and gather community feedback related to DEI efforts that influences decision-making. The final strategy under Goal Three is to create and implement a process that ensures the city will always consider diverse representation when appointing ad hoc committees, both when employees and community representatives and advisory boards. And I'll pass it on to Tabitha to talk more about looking ahead.
So the strategic plan will, will guide the work of the city staff on strategic activities over the next two years. The work plan includes consistent collaboration with the, with the board to ensure accountability. By June of 2023, the board in partnership with the city will develop a dashboard to track and monitor the progress of the strategies identified. And by December of 2023, the board in partnership with the city will adopt baseline performance metrics and year-over-year targets for the strategies identified. Now I'm going to hand it back to Pastor Pam.
Next steps. Upon the plan's approval, specific action steps for each item will be created to support the individual strategies. Moving forward, the DIC Rab will develop a strategic work plan focused specifically on civil rights. We would now like to conclude our presentation and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you all for the presentation and for all the work you've done on this. I know for many of you, it's been a labor of love, but I do appreciate all the work you've been putting in so far. I have a couple of questions pertaining to the strategic plan. Where did we come up with the survey questions? Were they based off of peer cities or like cities? Did you look elsewhere to develop the survey?
We have not developed the survey yet. This is strategic plan part. We will develop that survey after the strategic plan is approved.
Okay, is that going to be internal, you think, or are we looking elsewhere for?
I think we would probably use all sources available to us to minimize our workload plus gain the most bang for our buck.
Okay. Thank you. Who do you have in mind to run the audit on the city's practices?
We would like to utilize human resources for that.
Okay. All right. And under Goal Two, Strategy Five, you talk about existing policies and procedures that allow staff to identify and report discrimination. Are you talking along the lines of a hotline, or is that going to be involving HR as well?
We have not began that work completely. We will then liaison, work with our liaison and also with Dante Martin if there are other areas that we need to look into.
Okay, I guess I'm getting a little too into the weeds.
Yes, we're going to work on that in the second phase of our board.
Okay. Last one, how does the humans' rights campaign, rights campaign report card figure into your guys' grading system or ability to see where our shortcomings are?
I think that would be the same answer, that we were focused on getting our strategic plan created and approved, and then we will flesh out those details as we get to that spot in the plan.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Just say my, my enthusiasm matches my colleague, where he's already looking towards those next steps because of all the great work that you all have done up till, including today. I just want to thank you for the strategic plan. Just a lot of this stuff here is stuff that frankly, we've had issues with as a city. Just a few years ago, we've had, the Chung Report came out and said that one of our issues as a city is, our number one export then was, was talented young folks. And in that group, when you dove into the next layer, the overwhelming majority of talented young folks who are leaving Wichita were either people of color or women. And when we look at this talent retention, attraction, and advancement, a part of the strategic plan, I just am so not only inspired, but thankful that we're taking this head-on in such a way with measurable outcomes and putting best practices forward. So I, I think this strategy, this plan is really well done. I look forward to having discussions so we can move on to those next steps. And for folks who might not know this, I'm just gonna, it's kind of obvious, but I'm gonna say for folks who don't know this, you all are volunteers, and you guys have done so much good in this capacity in the city over the last year that we do, just owe you a debt of gratitude, because again, this can't be, it's not easy to attend meetings and to step up, step out, and value this type of work over family and work that you actually get paid for. So I do just want to take a moment just to thank you all for this work and for setting us on a course of writing some of the setbacks that we've had over the last few years into this plan. Further questions?
So I'll jump in. I don't, I do have one question, but also want to thank you all for the work that you've done. This is something that I've been excited about as well, and I think will do some real good for our city and community. One of my questions was answered already, but as you mentioned about local companies that you might partner with or engage with, what comes to mind for me is Cargill, Spirit, Fidelity Bank, and McAllen Gordon, who all make intentional efforts to implement policies and be inclusive. So I think they would be some great partners. With all of this work and this wonderful detailed plan, are we at a point where council should appoint their second member, or is that still some ways off?
I see Dante Martin motioning towards me.
Trying to say both of us.
And I see the thumbs up also, yes.
So we need to appoint Dante, is that what?
No, two different things happening.
If I may, Councilmember Johnson, mayor and council, working in close partnership with the board to execute the plan. To your point, Councilmember Johnson, in regard to engaging private enterprise, we've begun to have conversations with the chamber around how we can come alongside some of the work that Ricky Ellison and the chamber is doing with private enterprise. In regard to board appointments, as Pastor Pam mentioned, I believe we have nine current members in terms of making that second round of appointments. Met with Misty Brokner at PPMC yesterday, now is the time. And we want to be intentional in terms of what those appointments look like, so the plan is to come back to you all and give you an assessment of where we are in terms of current board membership, why we've lost certain board members, and then I'll also provide you with information so that you can make informed board selections going forward. One other thing I'd like to touch on, if it's okay with you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, once again, greatly appreciate the work that the board and PPMC has done, really heavy lift. As we talk about HR being engaged as they should be as it relates to talent retention, attraction, and advancement, really what we're talking about as it relates to DEI is a cultural shift, it's organizational-wide. So it's more than just HR, it's looking at policies and procedures throughout the organization. Alongside the work that the board has done, the county has engaged in a very intentional effort to evaluate, to audit, survey focus groups related to its DEI. I've had the benefit and the pleasure of working with Assistant County Manager Cole to understand its process. Also, I've had the opportunity to talk to the consultant that's doing the work for the city. Also, I've had the opportunity to talk to the consultant that's doing the work for the county and seeing how we could potentially execute this thorough, comprehensive plan that's been developed by the board. So just wanted to level set expectations. There are certain things that we are able to do in-house in terms of our in-house capabilities and capacity, but we're probably going to be looking at engaging outside partners in the work as well.
Thank you so very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our third item has to do with some recommendations coming to you from the Ethics Advisory Board, which is currently staffed by PPMC. And a person who you are somewhat familiar with, Kathy Sexton, representing PPMC, is here to convey the recommendations for your consideration.
It's so good to see you, Kathy.
Good morning, you all. It's very good to see you, and thank you for your time this morning. I'll be a little different from the group just before you. They had a lot of people here giving you the big picture. I'm one person, and I'm going to be in the details. So stop me anytime, otherwise I know your time is limited, so I'll kind of go fast. But you stop me as if you have questions or comments or what have you. What we wanted to remind you of is you hired us about six weeks ago in mid-December to develop implementation procedures for this new policy that you've passed, but also to perform the roles of the administrative duties of the Ethics Officer, the EO, because that's an unfilled position at this point, and also to support your board, your brand-new Ethics Advisory Board, the E A B, with policy edits and meetings. You hired us with the mission of fixing a few things in the policy that you had learned on the early implementation time that were going to be bugaboos, that's a technical term. And we are proud to say that since mid-December, your Ethics Advisory Board has met three times. And one of those meetings was like two hours. So they've been really working hard to slog through the policy and develop procedures and think through their roles and figure things out. So just to jump right in, on the first page, and I do think you have before you not only the PowerPoint, but the actual marked-up document, so in red, you should be able to easily follow along with the changes. This first change is on page one, and it is in red, and it was one of the missions given to us, is to how do we better define active member of a political party? We landed on a definition that would be comprehensive of paid work. Okay, so if you're being paid to work for a political party or a campaign, then that would be an active member. Also, an active member would be currently serving as a precinct committee person, committee man, committee woman, those are elected positions that basically are like neighborhood leaders in the parties. And I think, I think your words technically said before that these were prohibitive, but I don't think people understood it that way. And so we tried to reword it to make it clear that serving as a Republican or a Democratic precinct committee person would not be allowed to be a member of the Ethics Advisory Board. And then county, state, or national party leadership is also a part of that. So we think that those words add a little clarity to this first section. Now, something you did not ask us to do, but since we have the document open and we had good input from several attorneys, both the two that represent the board that you have provided for as outside counsel, but also several people on your board are attorneys, and we were able to, and I'm an English major, so okay, I'll just tell you, I love words, okay? And we just thought it would be best to update a few definitions on page, we're on page three now, so the definition of relatives was previously used on page four as family, and so we're just trying to make that all consistent. And then also, a member of the public suggested to me last week, I believe it was, maybe two weeks ago now, that, you know, does the definition of relatives, including sister and brother, does that include half-sisters? Does that include stepbrothers? And so the committee wrestled with that one and thought, you know, why don't you just put siblings in there? And it includes all those. Another technical update is on page four, and that is the list. There's a list of things that previously didn't have numbers, and I think it could have been interpreted two different ways, so we just added the numbers and the commas to make that clear. And if we've changed the definition of what you intended, you know, please say, but I think, I think this is more clear. Everybody who has read it so far has agreed that this is a little more clear. Now, the meat of what you asked us to work on is on page five, and that's the qualifications for people who serve on the Ethics Advisory Board. One thing that you ran into in making appointments to this board back in 2021 was the whole notion of, number three, may not hold public office or be a candidate for public office. We're suggesting inserting the word elected to make it very clear that people who retire from a full-time career of being a judge, elected judge, but then are helping out due to the pandemic in a part-time role in a, in a catch-up manner as just a part-time judge, or working for the county and county court one day a week, or working for a municipality outside of the, outside of Wichita, that would be a municipal judge, is like a one afternoon a week or one night a month kind of a deal, that that would be okay. So the edit we're suggesting here is something that clears up that it's okay for somebody to be in a public office, appointed like a judge, but not elected. The nonpartisan piece is in item four, and that is, the previous language said that you could not be an active member of a political party or of any partisan or nonpartisan political club or organization. We're suggesting here on that issue of what is a nonpartisan political club or organization? We, I used here legal women voters as an example, but let me tell you what, there's a ton of examples when you think about it, because nonpartisan could be anybody working on any kind of a school board issue, an election issue with the school policy, save the swimming pool effort, a school bond issue, any city issue, because city is also nonpartisan. So we felt like if we just remove the word nonpartisan, then it gets to the meat of what you had intended previously with the wording of this policy, but not eliminating from qualification of serving on this board. So many good people in the community who work on nonpartisan issues all the time. We did also find a gap that was probably intended, but by the time we edited this section, we need to then come in and change as well. And that is to specifically say that if you were substantially involved, paid or unpaid, with a current or the most recent campaign for a city council member or for the mayor in the city of Wichita, you would not be eligible to serve on this board. It is, it might have been assumed before, and it might have fallen under the nonpartisan piece that we just recommended taking out, but now we would suggest specifically saying that. The background check item that was added here as a number nine on the list of qualifications for a person to be on the Ethics Advisory Board, what we found is, that came up at the last meeting because a member of the public suggested that, that performance of criminal and civil background checks be done. The board discussed that, pros and cons of that, and landed on suggesting to you that you only put in criminal background check, two reasons. One, putting it on the list is transparent to the public. Anybody who wants to be on the board knows they're going to have a background check done on them. Two, your staff are already doing these criminal background checks. On the, every member there on your board that you've appointed already has had that criminal background check done. And number three, the reason the board is suggesting to you that putting the word civil in there is not necessary and would be overreach is because a civil background check is essentially a financial check. Did you have a bankruptcy? Have you been evicted? Do you have any other financial issues in your history? And so the board talked about that and just thought, you know, financial, personal financial issues are not really a good tool to use to disqualify people from a board that's working on ethics of current elected officials. So the next item's also on page five, and this was one of the missions you gave us, that as you got into appointing people, you found that the ethics officer is kind of an interesting deal in that they're a member, going to be chair of the Ethics Advisory Board. So all those qualifications just discussed apply to them. But on the other hand, this policy puts quite a lot of work on this person, and I think you found over the last year and a half of trying to find a person to take on this role, people got into it and looked at it and then thought, this is a lot of work, this is paid work. So informally, I think we all probably understand it's time to change that. And this, at the bottom of page five, under selection of ethics officer section, we did insert the words to be clear that the ethics officer shall be engaged and compensated as an independent contractor of the city. So payment is now provided as part of the policy, once you, if you approve this policy. Now, one thing that, that we also came around to, you didn't give us this mission, but we came around to this notion of perhaps considering that this is a special appointment. It is not just a board member, like a member of the Planning Commission or the Animal Control Advisory Board, or appointments of the city council, but this being a, also the chair of the E A B, but also compensated, but really needing to have some expertise in the ethics world and the ability to perform these duties. We felt like it was reasonable for you to say, we prefer you to live in the city limits, but it's not absolutely required. And that is partially because you've put some really good people on the board, that takes them out of running for being an ethics officer. You also have people who are not going to fit all those qualifications of the board member, because maybe they are involved in something else. But really, you only have so many people with ethics as a background and as a recent experience, and it's a small number. And a lot of those people aren't going to want to make decisions and be involved in this kind of, of an enterprise, which is essentially involved with passing judgment on controversial issues regarding their elected officials. So why limit yourself to someone who lives in, you know, Andover or Mays? We all know it's a metropolitan community, and a lot of your talent pool is not necessarily in city limits. So that's just a suggestion. Make a strong preference for being in the Wichita region, but not disqualify someone if they, you know, are an expert in ethics and in the legal profession in, you know, Topeka or something. So as far as the Ethics Advisory Board procedures, this, this section we marked up a lot, as you'll see on page six, but we really walked through it detail, detail, thinking, what do we need to make sure that this is very clear to the public who has, perhaps has issues and wants to make sure their issues are heard? So we said, why don't we require the use of a complaint form? Before, it said it has to be a written complaint, but it's hard because someone says written, and so then they write an email, and then you don't have basic other information about how to get ahold of them and some of the other things that are needed. So we thought really what would be best is to make a form that walks people through. This is a requirement. If you don't fill this blank in, you have not completed the requirements of this policy. And so we wanted to require a complaint form. It also, in this section, clarifies the role of the ethics officer versus the legal counsel to the board versus the Ethics Advisory Board itself. I think previous language would say something like, the board shall do an investigation. Well, when you think about that on a detailed level, how can seven people who have real jobs as a volunteer board do an investigation, right? Investigation really needs to be led by one person, interviewing witnesses and reading documents, and then making recommendations to the board, because the boards are wanting to make the decisions. And then some of these language here on page six that we added provides a way to process complaints when the ethics officer position is vacant, because as you know from December, that's one of the things we learned, is that things were at a standstill because nobody was authorized to pick up this policy and implement it, except an ethics officer, and that position was vacant. So we've put a couple of sentences in there to allow for in the future, if that position is vacant, then how would you handle that? Well, a certain decision upfront, when you first review, when the ethics officer first reads a complaint, basic decision is, did they meet the requirements of the policy? Is it in writing? Was it signed? Was it notarized? That kind of thing? Did they specifically say, here's what the problem is? And that initial review could now be done, is to be done by the ethics officer, but if that position's vacant, it's provided for, we've added language to say that members of the board itself would help in that initial review. And that way, you don't get someone submit a complaint and then have it sit there for months, waiting for the right people to be in office.
Kathy?
Yes.
Can I stop you there real quick, since you're on this? In this scenario, the way you have it read out, and I'll just use this one as an example, no disrespect to District One, since this is the example, but if the District One representative is serving in that capacity, and that complaint is related to a District One ethics issue, wouldn't that put that person in a very compromising position? I mean, how would you?
Just skip them, just skip over. Yes, absolutely.
Did you even just go to number two?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Okay, because I feel that puts that person and that board in a very uncomfortable position.
Yeah.
Because a political appointee can now be making that decision as to whether or not it goes forward or not.
Yeah, totally agree. Yeah, it's real easy to say, there's seven people here, somebody's on vacation, okay, skip them, we're moving on, in the interest of getting this dealt with quicker. If it's a conflict of interest, skip them, move on to the next person, yes.
And is there anything in the policy as it relates to that appointee voting or deciding on issues related to the person that appointed them? Is there any language, or is that discussed at all?
We have not discussed that in a board meeting. I will admit, I've thought about that, and I've wondered, hmm. I think that if people felt like they had a conflict, they would have to figure that out at the time and recuse themselves, but no, it is not listed in the policy and specifically spelled out. You know, I might write that down, though, and put that in part of the procedures, and the previous thing you said, too. We could add both of those to the procedures, which essentially are detailed-level procedures, more detailed than the policy, to help the staff, the attorneys, the board members, as they turn over throughout the years, go back to the, oh yeah, last year we decided we do, oh, three years ago, we figured out that, and we added that to the procedures. I will do that.
So in one of the original drafts of this policy, before it switched over to everyone having a direct appointee, there was, and this was taken after, I think it was Fort Worth's policy.
Okay.
There was a, sort of a jury selection through folks who are already appointed to boards. So these are folks who understand the process, who already took an oath of office and already appointed. There might be, and maybe we're overthinking this, but if, let's say, District One's appointee, just stay with picking on District One, for some reason, has an vested interest in the outcome of something, decides then to secede from the group to excuse themselves, it goes through that process where, well, could we get through these other committees, someone from District, who's an appointee from District One, who fills that vacancy for that one term or that one situation? So we've had, and that doesn't, that won't mean that the people, because a district appointee represents people that district, that doesn't mean that now that person and the folks that represent are excluded. It could be a way to fill in some of these positions if someone's not appointed at that time, or if someone is appointed, don't show up, or chooses to exclude themselves, a way to rapidly get someone else who represents that viewpoint, who's already somewhat within our system. Has there been any thought or consideration to possibly a hybrid?
If I understand you correctly, you're suggesting that if someone on the board has a conflict and recuses themselves, that we would rapidly get someone to take their place to decide a specific issue?
So if, when the board meets and they're meeting on like three, three different topics, let's say, and one or more people who are in the room says, hey, I actually have a conflict with this. Now, it's either we go forward where now the entirety of the city and the appointees of the city council are represented, or how do you get a substitute? And what I'm saying is that there has been, there is a substitute formula in not only a ongoing policy, but one that we've actually considered here at one point as well.
Okay.
And the process before it got to this point, where everyone wanted to make their own appointee, was to consistently have new people, once, once the boards convene, because the chair says, hey, this, we do actually have to look into this complaint, this is a real complaint, then it would be, people represent each district who are currently appointed, who meet the qualifications, will be asked, just like a jury selection would. So there is a process out there that we've even considered to bring everyone, all representation to the table, even if there are members missing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I did not know that, so thank you for sharing. Let me, let me stew that around a little bit. My initial thought is this, every complaint that comes before this board is, it's possible to be about the Animal Control Advisory Board guy, but it's most likely it's going to be about one of y'all. be about one of y'all. Okay? Everything they do is going to be one of you. So, I think that would be hard, to do this substitute deal, because, or any, any requirement, that a person, let's say, a person's appointed by Brian Fry, the complaint's against Brian Fry, and so you're always going to have to recuse yourself. I don't think that's a rule, and I don't know that it should be, because you're always going to have somebody removed. We'll have to give that some thought, but I think if, if you concede, or believe that you've appointed people to do your bidding, that's one thing. If you believe, or concede, that you've appointed people that you think are knowledgeable, and good decision-makers, and don't have close ties to you as a person, you're not expecting them to like, carry your water on your behalf, you're expecting them to look as a judge, and say, "Well, here's the facts, and let me vote my conscience. So, I can't get in your heads, I don't know how you appointed your, your people," but, the only conversation similar to this I've had with, with the board group, is just the more, less about how you would vote, and more about conversations. In other words, confidentiality. And it was this conversation that we had. It was, hey, as we're working through policies and procedures, if you want to talk to the person who appointed you on council, and bounce ideas back and forth, that's great, because that's policies and procedures. But, when it comes to, we now have a case, and here's the allegations, and here's the evidence, and here's the discussion, in an executive session, you will not go back and talk. And if your elected person who appointed you, or any member of the elected body, comes to you and says, "Well, what did you guys decide this on? And who did you talk to? And how come you, how come you ruled that person, you know, guilty, what have you?" Then, they would not answer those questions. There would be complete confidentiality, when it comes to the actual cases. That's, that's kind of where we've drawn some lines. Now, if you'd prefer, we'd talk about that at the next board meeting, and see about that more, we certainly could, but, I don't know if that's where y'all were headed, in terms of thinking there should be real clear, hard walls between an appointment, we'll just pick on somebody we haven't picked on yet. If Mr. Blueba appointed somebody, and a complaint is against him, then automatically, the person he appointed to this board would not hear the evidence in the executive session, would not decide, and would not be a part of the vote. If that's what you want, tell me, but, that's not where we were headed.
No, my comments were more, if we ever get into a situation where we don't have enough folks for our quorum, if we, do we have to go back and change, spend nine months researching and changing the ordinance, or can we have a fail-safe plan that will have a Plan B to get members together i- in that situation? And, I don't think we'll ever get to that. Fort, hey, I mean, Fort Worth, for example, says that they haven't had a ethics complaint in years, because again, and I hope we get, circle back to this part of the plan, the plan isn't supposed to be a gotcha, it's supposed to be a resource, where folks can actually go and say, "Hey, this, I'm concerned about this person, and this situation, can you, is this worthy of moving forward with a complaint?", just like we do with the state level ethics, as it is. Instead, I think you got, just, kind of this, this weird throwing complaints in there, just to see if they stick. But again, if you, if we start doing this right, my comment wasn't about, someone might have appointed someone who has favoritism, because I doubt anyone on this body would do that. It was more about, what if someone, for some reason, isn't there, and, God forbid, we don't have quorum, or we have a situation we have now, where we can't get the board together because of technicalities? Can we avoid those types in the future?
And Mayor, I appreciate that, I, and I apologize, I was trying to address both of y'all's concerns, but I hear you on the Fort Worth, and the substitute, and the quorum's a really good point. If there's a complaint about several, like three of you, or four, and it was all one complaint, all of a sudden, you wouldn't have a quorum, if everybody had to recuse themselves. It's a very good example.
I do have a question about the appointees not living in Wichita, just for consistency, all of our boards, you have to live in the city, is, is that correct?
Yes. Well, there, there might be a couple that might have like, professional qualifications, like a plumber, or something like that, but yes, generally, it is, it's a matter of ordinance. And that's where we noticed it on this, we thought, well, of course, the board members, your, your appointees to the board, seven people, would be living in the city. The, the exception we're suggesting would only be for the ethics officer, because it's kind of a hybrid. They are a paid contractor to do specific work, as per the policy, and support this board, but then, on the other hand, the policy also says they're the chair of the board, and they could break ties on the board.
You, you could avoid that cleanly by just taking that responsibility away from the ethics officer, not having them be the chair, and not having them break ties. And that may be the cleanest way to, to deal with that issue.
I think that's a really good point. If there was a reason you wanted that person to chair the board, you know, we, we could also balance that against, did you mean facilitator of services? Did you mean administrative work, to get the board together, to get new appointees up to day, up to speed with information? Helping review the complaints, it's all really technical work, but as soon as you say they're the chair of the board, and they'll break ties, all of a sudden, it's a, you're passing judgment, and it's a different from an administrative role.
Was it just suggested to separate the ethics officer from the board?
Yeah, make, make the ethics officer, the, the board would make a recommend, continue to make recommendation on an ethics officer to the council. Council would make the final determination on who the ethics officer will be. Because of their unique background, it may be difficult to find someone, I think what the board is saying, is you may want to look at somebody who lives in the region, but outside of Wichita. You look at who, some people that we looked at, even for interim capacity, because we were having a hard time getting expertise here. But the problem is, the way the ordinance was first set up, that person also has some governance responsibilities, and this would make it cleaner, if you took that away from them, because then truly would be an advisor to the board, and actually, a counsel, others that would ask questions of them, on, for issues, but they would no longer have the right to vote and break ties. Because, it would be, I think what Councilmember Blueba was saying, which I get, if you have somebody that you had to hire from Hutch, and then you're asking them to break a tie of the, of the ethics board, I'm not, I'm not sure that, that appearance is appropriate, or the actual practice is that appropriate. I think you're hiring that person, and in this case, you would be hiring them for their expertise, they're an independent contractor, which, I think makes it even harder to justify them being a, a tiebreaker. I throw that out as an option, because I, I understand the concern.
And that could also apply in the case of the interim ethics officer, if it was someone serving in that capacity temporarily, because there is no, that prevents one of the board members from having that additional power.
Yes.
Okay?
But, but my only, I guess, concern about that would be, if we take away that voting power, and one of the board members has a conflict, and it's something that's really difficult for that board, now you've taken away number seven, and it becomes a three-three vote, and you don't have a, a tiebreaker, at that point. Not to say it would never happen, but...
It's a good point, and, and we have to always remember, three-to-three tie, it's not like you're not doing anything, it's a, it's a failed vote.
Right.
You know what I mean? It just means you have to have four of six people agreeing, or four of seven people agreeing, right, to get to pass.
Well, now that we've jumped in that muddy water, so...
I knew this was coming.
What happens at that point, if it's three-three, and, so basically, there was no, we didn't find it was there, does it come back up? Does it keep going? Does somebody have to flip a vote, or is that it?
I mean, it's the same way on any public body, a three-three tie is a failed vote. So, motion fails. Because it did not...
Are we now, there's seven of us who makes appointments, are we now discussing that only the council makes appointments, and then, we, we now don't have an at-large appointment? Why would we only have six, if...
Okay.
Conflict of interest, so I was just following the example.
We're in a hypothetical, that someone decided to step out, and we didn't actually create a process to put someone else back on that board.
Well, no, I was going down the path of, if we went with the ethics officer not voting at all, then we've just got seven who are voting, so if one of the board members has a conflict, in this example, then there's only six people voting. If there's a three-three tie, what happens?
They'll vote, right?
I don't know if I'd be okay with regional, I think the person should live in Sutter County. Because Hutch, that example, that's Reno County.
I'm just going to point out there, the ethics officer, so the ethics officer, as we have learned, ethics is a real, actual policy field, that is specific, it is not feel-good stuff, you're not ethical if you, I, I don't know, park crookedly, and take up two spaces, that's technically, doesn't violate this, and to ensure that we have someone who actually, you know, is, is a, a subject matter expert, I think is important. I will say that, when it comes to, well, should that person be right from Wichita, or not, in the end, we, we actually approve that person. So, we don't have to tighten it in policy, by saying, this person has to live within the municipal boundaries. We could, we, we could value someone who steps forward, who qualifies, at the same qualifications, someone who, let's say, lives in Goddard, same qualifications, maybe we'll value the person from Wichita, because they are from Wichita, but that could be much more of a council discussion, than a hard policy line. And I say that again, because, a- as we've researched this, we know that, ethics in this, this role, is its own field. There, there are, there are full-on policy, and sections of academia, that this is what they do, and I think just assuming that anyone with a JD can do that is, is not...
It's a very good point, Mayor, and I thank you for saying that. I would, I would certainly stand to be corrected by, by your attorney, or anybody, but, it seems to me like, if your ordinance says, members of boards have to be living in the city, that, I don't know, if, because it's in an ordinance, not in the policy, that you have to live in the city, can the city council make an exception, by appointing someone to a board, that you know does not live in the city? Is that possible, to make an exception, because it's in the ordinance, it's not in the policy?
I'd be interested, because...
If it were in the policy, you could make an exception.
Well, the way the board recommended it, the person's an independent contractor, and so that exempts them from that ordinance requirement, right, Jennifer? Yep. But, if the council doesn't approve that recommendation, then that, then you'd have that difficulty.
And I'm just only saying all this, because the reason why we're here, is because we've kind of over, overdid the what ifs, to the extent where it was unworkable, and, so, I, I want to, I, I guess, when it comes to the language, leave this as workable as possible as we move forward.
Well, that's really helpful, though, because if, and, and we'll talk about this more after, with the attorneys, but, if the ordinance does not apply, then, we probably don't even need to say, necessarily need to say, that the ethics advisory, ethics officer does not have to live in the city. I think it's, it's more transparent, but, if the ordinance doesn't apply, then I was mistaken.
Kathy, thanks for your work in this. I just want to go back to the discussion of if there's, if there could potentially be a tie, and, you know, if, if a member of the seven felt that they had a conflict of interest, and I know this seems nefarious, and it's going to the absolute worst-case scenario, but, no one on this body, I know, but sometime, somewhere, somebody could encourage their appointee to abstain, and then, that would ensure that their case would not move forward, because it would be denied, right? So, could we say, in the case of a tie, because of an abstention, or conflict of interest, that then, the ethics chair votes to break a tie? If there's an abstention? Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
I just would hate, I just, it sounds really muddy to me, to have it be a three-to-three vote, and then it fails.
But, I'm sorry, but the board doesn't decide if it moves forward, it's the ethics officer that decides if the complaint is moved forward, correct?
Yes.
Correct, but if there's a tie vote, then...
But that's after the fact, after the case is heard.
Well, yes, that's what I mean, yeah. I'm not saying if the case moved forward, but, anytime there's a tie, I just think that's a very gray area. And I know, we can fix for everything, and we can predict everything, and I totally understand that, but, that seems like an area that maybe, we could tighten up a bit, if there's a tie, that there's a process, so that there isn't a tie.
We could completely avoid a tie, if we put in a Plan B, where if there isn't an appointee, or if we don't have quorum, or if someone says that they must exclude themselves, we have a quick way to get someone else in there. So, it goes back to my original comment, we, we have the formula for a Plan B, we've even discussed it as a body, as that being our primary, there, there are options out there, that could completely avoid one member, or more than three members not being a part of, of the discussion, that, that results in a hypothetical tie. But now, I appreciate the discussion, because I, I actually, I'll just say, if we have a full board, and the ethics officer is more the organizer, and not voting, then, that, that does make more sense. I, and I think going forward, really, you know, it's, we'll make changes and fixes, if something comes up that's unaccount, unforeseen at this moment, so...
Yeah, it's a policy, you can always open it up later, as well. I mean, I think what we're recommending today are, are a number of improvements, and it'll get us going on a path, and we'll probably find some more things next year, you know, and, and learn more things, and want to adjust it again. If you'd like, if you'd like, I'll move on to the next item. Also, on this slide, is the seven business days. So, this is at the bottom of page six, the last paragraph. As you all know, the policy was set up to allow, once a complaint is received, and determined, yes, they met all the qualifications, they signed it, they notarized it, they, they have a specific allegation, et cetera, then, return the complaint to the elected official being complained about, and say, "Here's the complaint, you have seven days, literally seven days, to give us your response back in writing." The Ethics Advisory Board is suggesting, you all take a look at the idea of adding the word "business," so, business days. So, typically, you know, it's not seven, literally, if I got it today, it'd be a week from now. In other words, you're taking off your two weekend days, and if it happens to be a holiday time, then you might be essentially giving your elected official two or three days, additional besides seven, to make sure they had time to comply. With that, the Ethics Advisory Board also suggested a second idea, which is, say that, say you were that person who got this, this email, you know, this notification from the ethics officer, "Here's a new ethics complaint, against you, you have seven days to respond", and you're in the hospital with sick mom, and you're thinking, "Ah, this is a terrible time." So, it, this new language that we're suggesting would give you the, the ability to say, "Hey, ethics officer, do I really have to have it in seven days? Because I'm in Minnesota, with my sick mom in the hospital," you know, just an example, but it's a good cause, kind of, suggestion. And the ethics officer would then be empowered to say, "Okay, you told me right up front, you asked within the seven days, you didn't wait for seven days to expire, and then you asked for more time. You asked me within the seven business days, or seven days, however you decide." And then, the ethics officer could grant only seven more days. I mean, it's a fourteen days total amount of time, so, or fourteen business days, whichever you prefer for that. But you'd have to show the good cause, and request in seven days. So, the board understood and discussed the need to rapidly move these complaints along, but also felt like, that both of these items would kind of work hand-in-hand. It would be given the ethics officer, one additional thing that is their decision, of course, it could be appealed, but, it's basically trying to say, "Let's make sure we give elected officials enough time to respond." So, these are really recent changes, and, and updates to the policy, I think, from last week, as I recall, so, any input you all have on that would be, we would love to hear it, but we just felt like these were, made the policy a little more workable.
I would suggest seven days per complaint. We've seen social media, people going out there, quick file a complaint against this person we don't like, and, to respond to these complaints, actually, takes effort in time, particularly for council members, who don't have staff, who might not check their email until three days in, so, that, I think should be considered, it was to stop... And, and it's different, the way they do it at the state level, where if you actually start filing off these, these responses, it's not a one-week turnaround, you know, they're, they're right now just fining people for stuff they did years ago, because it takes a while.
Yeah.
But, my concern, after seeing how this has been treated the last year, is abuse, and I wonder if someone, towards the end of an election, who fires off, and emails, and click here, write a complaint about this person, and now that person has seven days to answer a hundred complaints, that, that's, that's my concern, because we've seen that type of maneuvering in the last year on this.
You're thinking business days would be better, than the way it's written now, just to give two or three additional days, if it happens to be a holiday weekend, or...
No, what I'm saying is, seven business days per complaint that comes in, so if it is hijacked and misused, and someone files, Brandon Johnson's opponent, as, because we're sticking with the theme of picking on District One, Brandon Johnson's opponent gets twenty people to file an ethics complaint, now Johnson has seven days to write, you know, twenty ethics responses, I, I...
You're, you're good on that one, I mean, this is written, and being administered, as if it's one complaint at a time. Yeah, it doesn't matter if I get all, if I get twenty on the same day, doesn't mean I'm... sending them all to you on the same day. You know what I mean? Yeah, we can stagger those as it is. In fact, we probably would, just because we have to have time to sit down and look at each one and communicate, but.
The main change you hear, though, is asking for an extension to 14 with good cause.
Two changes, seven days versus seven business days.
Got it.
So literally, you would have two extra days by insertion of the word "business" just because you're not, you know, having to use the weekend, right? And then if it's holiday, it'd be three. So, but then, give the ethics officer just a smidge of authority to make an exception and give an additional seven days. Okay, well, thank you for that, and I really am almost done, and let's see here. So the next thing is the Ethics Education section, and that is on page eight of your document. And I think these are, okay, so the one change is that the current policy does say that both the ethics officer and the outside legal counsel to the EAB, which, you know, you're paying attorney rates for, would be a public resource, that the general public, as well as you all, could ask them questions. And so we really felt, unless you're thinking otherwise, I know last time I was here before you in December, there was concern about the cost of implementation of this policy. This change would help you minimize your costs because you're not asking that outside attorney to serve and respond to all the questions of the public, but also your ethics officer is handling all that and would be, would be the person accessible to the public as well as the elected officials and the appointed officials.
Kathy, just, you know, that actually goes back to the original ten, I think, of the ordinance when we first started drafting this. The idea was the ethics officer would be a volunteer and would seek legal counsel when needed, but now if we're going towards legal counsel, we'll be the ethics officer, and we're okay with spending money upfront to professionalize this, then I think your edit actually brings it back to the original ten.
Great, thank you so much. And the second one does say opinions made by the ethics officer or legal counsel could be appealed to the board. And we just felt the word "decisions" would be better to represent what you're trying to get at there, is that if someone disagrees with the decision, for example, of your complaint does not meet muster, we're sending it back to you so you can make sure you fill in this blank or whatever. If you want to appeal that to the board, you certainly could, but, so just a change in language there is rather minor change.
Kathy, do we need to set up a process for the appeal as well? So, I mean, what is the statute of limitations on an appeal here, and is there a process that needs to be spelled out? Sunbeacon.
Okay, thank you, yeah. It's like, it crossed my mind, but no, we certainly didn't think it ought to be a part of this policy, but we ought to be thinking about how we would handle that and make it a part of the procedures, probably. So please, I'll be around after your meeting if you have other thoughts, but just to wrap up for today, I would say that we are, would love to schedule this policy revisions document for your, any upcoming city council meeting so that you can approve it. And I think, once approved, we could then restart the process of trying to find an ethics officer that would serve in a permanent capacity. And we do have several investigations in process as well right now, and we are also updating the complaint form, which is online, but we're working on a new form based on everything we're learning and hearing from people. We've taken effort with city staff's help to update and better improve the web presence. Probably some more improvements coming, but it's a lot easier to find the ethics page with all this information on it now than it was even just a couple weeks ago. And we're also working with city staff to create a video regarding the education or the orientation. So you're coming up on board appointments in March and April. You'll have new people coming in, and right now, the policy's out there for them to read, but we'd like to put a video out there as well. For, say, for example, maybe your city attorney makes this video helping these new board members understand what their responsibilities are under the ethics policy. And then, of course, as mentioned, we're drafting procedures. So we have quite a few efforts underway. I think we're all happy to report progress in this area, and Anne appreciate any additional thoughts or ideas you all might have.
Kathy?
I do have one recommendation. I'm sorry, I just wanted to share it really quick, and I'd like to see it sooner rather than later. As a new member on the council, since I wasn't around during the debates during the ethics policy, could we have a training to go over the definition of "gifts"?
Gift.
Under this policy and the conflict of interest, I'd like to see a training that goes over what is required by the statement of substantial interest form at the state level or the city gift log of how to handle conflict of interest.
Okay.
Some of it is unclear in the policy, and I think there could be ways to make it better or more clear.
Okay. So, thank you very much. We haven't looked at that section at all, so, yes, thank you.
But the statement of substantial interest, that is a Kansas Ethics Commission requirement. It's not a local policy.
Yeah.
Well, we can just help make it more clear.
Right, I understand.
We'll get with the city attorney, and we'll get back to you.
Great, I think, appreciate it. Thank you.
So the last thing I wanted to request in the complaint process is to actually, should we require people when it comes to the statement of policy or the outline, that your complaint actually has to cite a specific A, B, C, or D that?
Yes.
That you are claiming?
The new revised complaint form that we're working on right now specifically addresses that. So for everyone's benefit, if you go to page three, the section of your policy that specifically says, here's the stuff you can and cannot do, for example, is statement of policy. Right in the middle of page three, it's items A through P. So the form, the new form, is going to ask the member of the public who has a complaint to say, which one of these are you alleging was violated? Was it item K? Was it item M, never use city equipment or resources for outside of your official duties? Was it, you know, was it D, seek no favors? Which one was it? So yes, there's A through P. There's a lot of them on there, and we're referencing it on the form, saying, pick one or more, tell us which one you think. Don't just say, well, I don't like what so-and-so did. Which part of the policy does it violate? Thank you for that.
I just wanted to add just appreciation for all the work that you and your team did on this. I think these are really good suggestions. My only addition, I've told the managers, I'd like to see this be an ordinance and not a policy. I think our intent early on, I can't remember if it was to make it an ordinance or just a policy, but I think this should be in city ordinance.
Yeah, and if not, because we had this discussion, and it was a surprise to us when it was brought to us as a policy, we currently have an ethics, we'll call it an abstract, that is an ordinance. It doesn't really, I think, conflict with this, but it is confusing with the not attached. It's not, it's either we could cut and paste this, put it into that section of the ordinance for ethics, or perhaps in the ordinance cite for more information, see Policy 39, or something along those lines, but I agree with Councilman Johnson. It seems like ordinance is supposed to be a higher level than policy. They aren't really in conflict, but it is, the one that's in ordinance is much more vague. So at this moment, it seems that we are handling these two as one, but other interpretation might be, well, you might not be violating policy, but I think you're in violation of the ordinance or vice versa. Is there a way to?
And your board has no authority over the current ordinance, only over the policy, so they're not being treated as one, okay? But I agree, it's like a paragraph or half a page in ordinance. But I think it's fair to say, and I would love to hear if others besides two want this, because this is going to be a lot of work to change it into an ordinance. It's going to take more time. I mean, I could probably come back to you at the next meeting to get this approved so that we could proceed, and then we could do a next step later to recodify it, rewrite it, combine it with the current ordinance so that it doesn't conflict, and make sure this board is in charge of all that. But right now, as written, the board is over the policy but not the ordinance. And so if someone violates the ordinance, the board is not set up to deal with that at all. No one is, I don't think.
Well, we are. But also, my concern also is if the public says, the confusion with the public reading the ordinance and then going through the board process and then being told, well, that's actually, we're not in charge of that part, and can we clean it up?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good to see you guys.
So we thought we would go to an easier subject, animal control. That's our fourth item. Captain Dan East is going to introduce the topic, and there are a number of issues related to animal control that we want to cover today.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. I'm not sure if it's any easier. There we go. Also with me today is Lieutenant Derek Purcell. He's the commander over Animal Services. And I'm going to let him go through the first couple slides. He is the one on the ground working out there day in and day out and explain to current staffing our numbers as far as it relates to animal intakes and so forth. So I'll let him go over the first couple slides.
All right, so the first slide here just deals with staffing, and this is, in essence, the staffing allotted to Animal Services. First, you have myself as a police lieutenant, and then we have two Animal Services supervisors. One of our supervisors that had been there for 40 years retired this year, so he was replaced. We hired a new supervisor in November, so he's, I mean, he knows what he's doing, but he's still going through a bit of a training process. Anytime you're moving to a supervisory role, that's expected. We're allotted 23 animal control officers. I currently have 19 positions filled. Three of those 19 are currently in training. One thing that we've strengthened is our FTO process, our field training process. So I've got three new field training officers, and they currently all have a trainee with them. Of the remaining four positions, I have three employment offers out there, meaning I went through a hiring process. I had three candidates that I selected. One of the three, I'm certain, has already taken the spot because she's already spoken to me about it. The other two, I haven't heard back from yet. But then I have one open position that I was planning on contacting HR and posting this morning, but I've been here, so I should get that posted today or tomorrow. Kennel technicians, for those of you that don't know what those are, their job is part-time. They show up in the morning and they clean the shelter. Basic shelter operations, not to get too much into the weeds, but every morning from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, we've got to care for the 100 to 200 animals in the shelter, which means feeding, watering, medicating, and then cleaning out kennels and getting things ready for the next day. So the kennel technicians take a load off of the animal control officers, because before kennel technicians, animal control officers had to do all the work. We're allotted nine kennel technician positions. I have one filled, and I'm extending employment opportunity to the last person that went through the employment process. One of my kennel technicians is becoming an animal control officer, so I have four positions currently advertised. That'll be five. I'm getting ready to run another hiring process next week. The one difference with kennel technicians being it's a part-time position, one thing we've done a little bit differently is I've had a constantly open application process. So as applicants apply, they're going through their background checks. As their background checks are coming out, we're setting up interviews. So it's just kind of streamlining it instead of going through that very structured animal control officer process that we had to go through. The next slide is intakes and outcomes. If you guys have been at the meeting, I went on about this for about 25 minutes during the last board meeting, but in essence, I'm looking at 2021 numbers and 2022 numbers. One thing I've done is I've gone back, I've actually gone back 10 years to try to figure out what our trends and processes are so I can kind of predict the future of what we're going to need to be doing and where I need to put the resources at the shelter. In 2021, you can see our intakes in dogs was 4,126, intakes in cats, 4,943. In 2022, we saw an over 800 dog increase, and cats remained relatively constant. What's interesting about the cat numbers is about 2019, we hit 3,900, and we've kind of planned off at that. There's been times in and out throughout the year where we've had to stop taking cats because we've been getting full. The way you approach cats and dogs is somewhat different, as is the ownership of cats and dogs is somewhat different. That's kind of borne out in the return to owner rate, or I call it the RTO rate. In 2021, of the 4,126 dogs that entered the shelter, 1,432 owners returned and collected their dogs. That gave me a 34.7% rate, meaning that that remaining 65.3%, we had to find outcomes with rescues and KHS. In 2022, our intakes increased by 800, but our return to owners decreased by about 200. The overall percentage dropped about 10% year over year. That means that 10% fewer people returned their dogs while we had about a 20% increase in intakes. So net, that kind of gave us a 30% increase in animals that are seeking placement, which means that the rescue partners in KHS have to work a little bit harder to find placement for those animals. Nationally, our euthanasia rate is probably the lowest you're going to find, especially in a municipal shelter across the country. We're running right about 2%. Going forward into 2023, and looking back, I guess, a little bit in 2022, we saw our trends in 2022, the first part of the year, kind of followed what we did in 2019 and previous years, but when the summer of 2022 hit, our intakes began to increase exponentially over previous years, and we're seeing that translate into 2023. As of right now in 2023, our intakes are up about 30% as to this point where they were in 2022, and our return to owner percentage has dropped to 21%. So kind of extrapolating the numbers, I've done a few bit of figures. I'm expecting this year to take in approximately 6,000 dogs and probably a little more than 4,000 cats, depending on how we manage the shelter, so.
Just a quick question about the numbers that we see with the cats.
Yes.
They've all pretty much plateaued. The euthanasia rate dropped substantially between '21 and '22. Is there anything that you can attribute this to? Maybe some of the outside groups working on TNR, does that have an impact on these numbers?
Well, we don't, we don't have TNR here in Wichita. This is a city ordinance thing.
Right. I just mean, some of the outside groups, like friends of felines, how they go out and they essentially do spay and neuter on their own.
Yes. So I guess, maybe I don't understand your question exactly, but the, if you're talking about the return to owner rate and the euthanasia rate with the cats, what's, it's, I don't want to say comical, but it's very consistent with cats, the return to owner rate over the last 10 years has been about 2%, meaning that of 100 cats that come in, two owners show up to collect their cats. There's, you know, populations of cats in the community are a little bit different than dogs are. We typically don't have, you know, we don't have feral dogs. Most dogs that we have in the community are, were owned at one time, released, or just not cared for. Cats is just a little bit different.
Okay, so cats is just steady, just steady numbers, pretty much.
Yeah, cats, cats can become overwhelming. I'll just put it that way.
Yeah.
Lieutenant, on your intake on dogs, are you seeing a trend there? Is it puppies? Are there older dogs? I mean, why, you had an 800 increase, and you're projecting another increase off the 23. Is there any kind of commonality that you're seeing with this?
The one, so right now, where we find ourselves, and I've done a lot of reading nationally about what's going on, we're coming out of COVID. So the trends in pet ownership were a little bit different in 2019, 2020, and 2021. We are seeing a lot of dogs that we would estimate in the two- to three-year-old range, which would have been puppies during COVID. Also during COVID, a lot of the resources, the medical supplies that would have been used for spay and neuter surgeries were diverted to hospitals, so there wasn't as many spay and neuter surgeries. And where I noticed that, where, and mind you, I've only been here a year, so I'm speaking from my experience, and then the messages have been passed down from previous people. We typically see an increase in puppies and kittens in the spring. This year, starting in the summertime, we continued to see puppies in the shelter and mothers with puppies entering the shelter. So the puppy population did not drop this year like it has in the past.
Thank you. I mean, that was my thought, that it was probably COVID-related, people were adopting during COVID, and you're seeing more of the puppies. Are puppies more adoptable or are mature dogs more adoptable? I know that's probably a hard thing to quantify, but what do you see there?
At the shelter, we don't do any of the adoptions.
I know that.
Yeah, but, I mean, everybody wants a puppy. The problem is the people, I think it's kind of an education issue. People don't take into consideration the amount of effort and work that goes into actually owning and caring for an animal, and that's probably the biggest issue.
Okay, thank you.
I just wish the euthanasia numbers were like bold and bigger based on the stuff we get tagged.
we get tagged in that say that we're destroying all the dogs in the city. Those numbers definitely should be talked about more.
Yeah. And I did work with, so we, our records management software is Chameleon. And some of the, some of the people that work at Chameleon have worked in the industry across other places. And that, one of the people I was working with to create some reports had done stuff for Shelter Lives Matter, which is a national organization to keep some statistical data as to the live release rate and things like that. And when he was running our numbers, he was, he actually was, I was on the phone with him and he goes, "Are these numbers right?" And I said, "As far as I know." And he goes, "This is unheard of in a municipal shelter to have these kind of numbers." That speaks, I think that speaks volumes to the relationship we have with KHS and our rescue partners more so than any one specific thing I can relate it to in the shelter.
Do you have an idea of how, what percentage of the dogs that we've put down have been dangerous dogs?
I don't have an exact percentage. I can look into it. That was one of the issues that I was trying to work through with our records management this year was consistent, repeatable, I don't want to say facts, but statistics. So over the course of the 10, 15 years I've been using Chameleon, the way we've entered data has changed slightly, but the old options hadn't been removed. And so to get that data, I just have to parse through everything a little bit better to get exact information for you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That was my cue, I think. It's my time now, so.
Walk-up music.
Yes, I had, I had a little, you know, entrance music here. Good afternoon, everyone. First, I'd like, and I'm going to go over, it was brought up to the Animal Services Advisory Board on the, a potential ban of retail pet sales. And just so, in July of 2022, during a meeting, there was a motion and with a four to three vote, it was asked of the Wichita Police Department to have the Wichita Police Department look into an ordinance to the ban, to ban the sale of puppies, kittens, dogs, and cats at retail pet stores. So with that, we kind of started seeing what that would look like, not knowing, you know, what that would look like. We met with folks for and against the ban. We discussed, we had some discussions on that. There was already multiple meetings before in reference to this. It just didn't organically come up in July of 2022. There was already multiple meetings at the Animal Services Advisory Board, previous meetings where this was brought up. We looked at, we looked at similar cities with similar ordinances. We elected to look along the I-35 corridor, starting in Minnesota, going all the way down into Texas. With that, we looked at, in Minnesota, we found that St. Paul has an ordinance. And then as we started dropping down, really the, I think Midwest City, Oklahoma, was one that had one. But there were none in many, or as far as Des Moines, Kansas City, Missouri, Kansas City, Kansas, Overland Park, Kansas, Topeka, Kansas, Oklahoma City. We reached over to Tulsa. We use them as some comparisons at times also, until we get to Texas. And in Texas, most every major city has some sort of an ordinance or they're working on some sort of an ordinance in Texas. So with that, we looked at the ordinance and most of the ordinances are very similar. They ban the retail, from retail stores, they're banning the sale of puppies, kittens, dogs, cats. They go through all the terminology. They do make exceptions. You can have adoptions from Humane Society's animal rescues. And then they get into a portion and it's, if the business is a not-for-profit kind of business, some of those had that provision in there that allowed for the sale. The Wichita Police Department would not, or we do not oppose a statewide legislation and regulation. But based on the demonstrated effectiveness, there is, I'm going to kind of fast forward in this, there is litigation that is going on. Arkansas, they're in Fayetteville, the city enacted, and there's, they're in litigation right now. Fort Worth, Dallas, one of those two, there's litigation. Florida, going way off to the east, they just enacted Florida. There's some litigation they're working through. Also, New York did a statewide ban. I think they became the sixth or seventh state to do it, nation to do it across the US. And it looks like they're going to be, and potentially in some litigation there also. So we took that into consideration. The state has already, they've increased revenues. The Department of Agriculture, their investigators, that is who is tasked with inspecting puppy mills. So they, the state increased funding and I believe it was two positions, correct? They added two positions. One, I believe, was an inspector, one is, was an investigator to handle the inspections and enforcement on that side of it. And then kind of moving back up there where it says, based on demonstrated effectiveness. Something that was talked about was if Wichita would enact a ban for the, on the retail sale of pets, what would it look like and what, what would happen? Well, we talked about, is there the potential these stores would close or they would open up a satellite store in a neighboring city that does not have a ban? Whether you're going, you're talking Goddard, Andover, Mays, Park City, Valley Center, all of these municipalities. And would that happen? We, in talking with folks that have, that are for the ban, they don't feel that this may not be a viable option. They may not do that. We're not sure. We know there's a whole nother kind of a onion you're going to open when it comes to the businesses breaking leases, moving. And there's nothing that would prevent them from advertising and then the sale taking place outside the city limits of Wichita with that. So what we did is we called down to Texas. We looked on places where there are bans in effect. We called down and talked, looked at dogs they advertised for sale, called the stores and asked, and in those occurrences, they will set everything up, but you're refused, you're refu, referred to a store right outside the city limits. So that is, given the proximity of Wichita and all of our surrounding communities, that was a bit, that was a concern, concern that we had. So with that, we felt, Wichita Police Department, we do not believe that this is the venue to affect the change desired. We feel that this should be at the state level is where, if something's going to be done, it'll be at the state level. Unless something has changed very recently, we do not have puppy mills inside the city limits of Wichita. I'm not aware of any in Sedgwick County. I could be wrong. I have some experts in the back that may correct me if, on that. I do know as early in, I think it was September of this year, in Sumner County, in Conway Springs, on the Humane Society of United States, they looked into a gentleman there and an investigation was opened up with the Sheriff's Department and with the result of 60 some odd animals being taken out of the conditions there. So kind of to go back over, we don't oppose it, but we feel that the state is the best to handle this. Kind of looking at, are we going, are we going to go after a point of sale or a point of origin? If these, if the puppy mills are in the state of Kansas, we have no jurisdiction. I know that on the, you know, the big, from what I've read and looked into on the retail sale portion is you're cutting off that pipeline. You're cutting off that avenue, that mechanism for those dogs to be purchased from these breeders, some of them that may be running puppy mills. So that is the conclusion that we came to, that we feel would be better suited at state level.
Just a couple of quick questions here. It seems like most of the concern isn't with puppy mills in Kansas. It's puppy mills in, for example, Missouri. I think there's a pretty infamous one there that they're talking about. So I'd just like to make that point. Do you think any of the concerns are raised by the groups who want to ban puppy or the sale of puppies and kittens and dogs and cats in Wichita? Do you think any of their concerns are valid concerns?
Well, without doing, you know, actually going into these stores, I'll never say never. Not, you know, I'm not in the pet industry and the retail side and purchasing of them. We had owners of, of the pet stores here bringing their books saying these, you know, we do not, we do not get our pets or our animals from puppy mills. They go through. We have people that say, "Oh, you bought it from a broker." And if you look at where that dog came from, it may have come through a broker's side of it. So, you know, I will never, I will never say never because I don't work there and I don't have the insight on exactly what is done.
Does Kansas Department of Agriculture, do they look into the puppies that are being sold elsewhere before they come to Kansas? Kind of like you get a car in Oklahoma and you have to have it inspected before you can get it registered here?
That, I, that I don't know. I'm sorry. You mean, do they, if a local store here in Wichita is purchasing a puppy
From Missouri.
From the Missouri area, no. Now, I don't know if they do. I do know they are subject, if they come and inspect the stores, then they would look at them that way.
Okay.
Do you know if that's, if we have
CDI, which is a certificate of veterinary inspection. The unfortunate part is if the broker has a truckload, then they do, you know, they list them and sign off without actually looking at mammals. The USDA just passed a law that'll make that, I believe it goes into effect in July, that will make them look at every puppy. But, no, they're just fine.
Thank you. Do you have any suggestions or ideas or other workarounds that might help address the concerns and ensure that every puppy here that's sold in Wichita does not come from a puppy mill?
Well, I think first is the conversation needs to be had with the state. And I think to have that conversation, there's strength in numbers. Wichita Police Department, City of Wichita, Sedgwick County, Agent Midge, Backdoor with HSUS, all of the organizations, all of our rescue groups. Because the one thing that came out of the meetings that we had, and there was no wavering on this, nobody could, would tolerate the inhumane or the cruel treatment of animals on, no matter which side, you know, whether you didn't think we should have a retail ban or there should be a retail ban. That was a common ground. So I think that common ground could be built upon. And my, my feeling is a strong force, it may be going to the state and having those conversations, if that's something city, county would want to pursue.
Yeah, I'd love, this is on my radar, so I'd love to explore all options, whatever we can do with this one.
All right. Moving on, community challenges. Animal, dispatching and animal services, we heard it the last meeting, we heard it before. Basically, we have a dispatcher that's there from 7:00 in the morning till 3:00, 3:30-ish. We found, through folks that were calling in and also through, on the Animal Services Advisory Board, we found basically a crack in our system here. The way the phone would roll over and it would continue to roll and it may not be answered. So we thought possible solution is to forward the phone because there's a duty animal control officer in the evenings after hours for those late night calls. And so the problem is, what we found with the cell phone, that building is solid concrete. There is no reception inside of that building or very little unless you are pushed up against a window. So we are in the process, or actually not we, Lieutenant Purcell is in the process, working with IT, getting that phone to where it's going to roll up to the front desk, right up front where we have that staff till 7:00 at night. Also, we need, we're looking into the option of Wi-Fi, getting Wi-Fi in that building. So we have that, which would help on the cell phone side on that part. So we're looking at that. The next thing, improved community engagement and outreach. It is very difficult to find Animal Services webpage. It is within the police department and it's, it's, it's not user-friendly. And so we are going to be working with IT. We would like to move that on the forefront because there were some fantastic ideas that came out of the Animal Services meeting just last week about more of a community involvement in animal welfare. You see a neighbor that their dog's getting out because their fence was broken was part of an example. And if they can go on this and see a list of resources, whether it's contact their community policing officer or other places, it may help with that to get their fence fixed, which means the dog is hopefully not going to be getting out, which is, we don't have to go looking for that dog, which would hopefully cut, reduce our calls. So we're looking at bringing that in the forefront and just making it much more customer service friendly, easier to use. Information's right there. And as far as how to get, if they need to look at getting licenses, where to do those things. And so just kind of bringing it up front. And then improved response times and proactive trolls. Those are other things that we, we hear all the time and we understand. With the hiring, majority of the staff is going to be going to second shift, which will handle those higher call loads in the evening times and get them out and be more visible. So that's what we're looking at. We don't, you know, it always comes up, do you need more staff? Do you need this? Until we get fully staffed and we can streamline some things, we need to see if this works and see, and then see if we need to tweak it and what we need to look at. And then come back and say, we're fully staffed. We've taken care of the phone, the communication, making it easier for members of the community to get the answers they need. And then, and then we can sit down, we can have a conversation on what we, what we may or may not need. So.
Was there anything that you could identify from the city's perspective that could help? I know, I believe you guys have had some software issues and some things in forms of communication. Is there anything we can give you, go to a different vendor or a different, you know, communications platform?
I don't, on the software, we, we're still looking at it. We've, we've improved, what's going, I, I use, Lieutenant Purcell's done an incredible job with looking at that Chameleon software, working with the vendor, and we have resolved that. You know, we may be coming and ask as far as the Wi-Fi and some of those things because we have some ideas down the road on just kind of moving animal services forward, but we need to get fully staffed first and see how this works because we're not, we're not sure yet. But these are kind of our, our, the thing, the items we hear, whether it's from the community at meetings, you know, unfortunately, sometimes it's the response times. They're not, they're not that good. And I would love to be able to come up and give you, you know, like with the police department, here's our average response find, response times for priority one, two, and three. The software we had before, the way it tracked it, it would be response times in days and weeks, the way it did it. It was, it's not accurate at all. So that's what we're working on. So we can look at this and come back much more informed and say, this is what we feel we would need to move forward. And the first is, we just need to get staffed.
And they, just to piggyback on the comments of my colleague, when it comes to software, one of the pressing issues that we've had, particularly in South Wichita for over a decade, since I've been in office hearing about these issues and also Vice Mayor's been hearing about them more recently, frankly, is folks who, who now have to move their mailboxes because there's been a report of a dog running in the area. Our mail carriers will, will say, basically now, because of this dog running around now, you have to put a mailbox towards, towards the front of your yard and so on, your house. The issue with that is we have a strong concentration of retirees and folks that walking out to their mailbox is actually quite the effort and potentially has that walking out to their mailbox is actually quite the effort and potentially a hazard. As we look towards, uh, potential software solutions or whatnot, uh, you, you just mentioned that the way our police department responds is a tier system.
Yes.
And is there any discussion or possibly ways where if, uh, someone reports that not only is there a dog running around in a particular area, but also they're now at risk of having their mail service altered, that we can add that, a higher tier to a situation like that, uh, so we can have more all hands on deck to try to preserve, uh, that, that neighborhood's, really our neighbor's ability to continue to live on, neighbor's ability to continue to live on their own without having to rearrange how they get mail?
Um, I do, I'll let Lieutenant Purcell, he has been meeting with members of the postal inspectors and, um, talking about this. So, and, and the software, he's the expert, so I'll let him answer that question. That's a great question. Thanks.
So there's, there's two things in that question. So first off, if, if you're in a neighborhood where you have existing mail service at a curb or at a box and that's a hardship for a resident, they can contact the post office, uh, and fill out a hardship and they will adjust their delivery route for that mail, for that address, for that resident, um, to it, to adjust for that hardship. So that's, that's first things first. Second-
I've been dealing with this for ten years. You're the first one to tell me that, by the way, so thank you.
I'm sorry.
That, that's a great piece of information. That's going to be very handy.
Yep, it's all on the USPS website, along with all the forms they need to have filled out. Um, but as far as the, the issues with the post office are concerned, um, the USPS has a direct line to our dispatch, which is answered in priority, um, there. So if, if the, if the phone line for the postal service calls, um, we get somebody on that right away. Uh, Ryan Opik used to be the post, well, he still is the postmaster. He's away on assignment. The current acting postmaster is Lynn Gutierrez. I've met with her twice, once with Councilman Hoheisel and Johnson. And, uh, then second I went to, it was Friday, it was their, uh, every post office has their own manager, and so they had a manager's meeting, and so I attended that. Um, at the post office, there's a little bit of, I mean, I wanna say this without, I'm not pointing fingers and I'm, there's both pe, both communities have to work together, the post office and the animal services. So they're refining the way that those, um, letters go out. I know there was one on South Chautauqua, um, or Shataqua.
Shataqua.
Um, where, uh, where the letters went out, went out very fast. So there was the, there was initial incident, letters were sent out and with eight days, um, the notifications that the mailbox we were going to the curb was sent out. Um, they're working to standardize that, so they have the, a consistent amount of time in between each one of those incidents. And then when those letters get sent out, now they're getting sent to the animal control and scanned, scanned into, I'm sorry, animal services and scanned into animal services at the same time. So when we get those, I can send those to dispatch right away and we can, literally as soon as they complete their report, we're sending somebody out the following day.
So basically, you got it all under control.
I'm, I'm working on it. I like to, I'd like to say I've got it all under control, but I'm working on it.
That, that's amazing. Thank you so much for being on top of this. Uh, I mean, that, that's going to, I, I think, help, uh, when we talk with our neighbors about what the process is and having you with that hands-on approach, showing up to these extra meetings and building those relationships, uh, with, with the postal managers, I, I think's very important. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and that was, it was quite surprising to find all the different avenues and that it was up to every manager of the, every post office to kind of do their own thing. So, um, I appreciate the added communication and, um, just working with it to figure out a better way to do it.
Sort of piggyback on my fellow Southsiders here, i- it was about ten years ago I had the issue. We brought the post office in here because the post office was making everybody go directly to the post office to get it. So it sounds like maybe we've got some workarounds on that. Um, to echo some of the, the calls and emails I get, it's about dog bites. It's about resources. We don't have the resources. Somebody will say, well, if we had a dog bite, but we were told it wasn't a serious enough bite to get somebody out there, or we're dealing with more serious bites. Um, more than anything, I'm hearing more about dark, dog bark issues and what can we do? We went and talked to the neighbor. Um, wha, what do we tell citizens whenever they reach out to us about those?
If you're, I, I would, I would never say a dog bite is not serious. Um, I don't want to be bitten by any dog. Uh, and so, um, if, if they feel, and that's part of going to our website and wanting to get it more out front, with, if somebody wants to look at that, obviously it'd be, um, challenging during some instances, but if they feel they're in a dangerous situation with an animal, doesn't matter what that animal is, a dog, um, they need to call 911. I mean, that's, that's what that is there for, for that immediate response. Animal control will be coming, but we, the officers go out on a lot of dog, they will go out on dog bite calls. So if they're serious or, um, it's a vicious dog chasing somebody, um, the officers will go out. So there is that mechanism. Um, the second, uh, excuse me, what's the second part of your question on the-
On the bark, nuisance issues?
On the bark.
People up all night, the whole neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm sure you guys have heard the story.
Yes, yes, yes. Uh, those are, we, those we, um, kind of talk about quality of life issues. Same as allowed, same as loud music. Um, we always ask if they can resolve, uh, with their neighbors and talk to their, talk to their neighbors. Some people don't want to or they've tried and it's not going anywhere. Then I would recommend, uh, they reach out to their, uh, local, their community policing officers and talk with them because that is who, um, deals and will work with those. Animal control, um, can also, but a lot of those quality of life, we find there's a lot of other things also going on with that. It may not just be, um, a dog barking.
My most recent inquiry was actually a District Five citizen. I think they reached out to Councilmember Frye as well and, um, they're just, you know, squeezing on us, asking us what, what we can do and I, I, you know, I, I, I told them exactly what you said, work with the neighbors, try, try to get the community, but, you know, they're, they're, they're looking for more kind of enforcement and I just don't know what's out there and never comes to the nuisance of a dog barking all night.
I just want to thank my colleague for pointing out that the complaint came from District Five. I thought he was talking about me. We have a new puppy and she's having an issue with the adjusting, so thank you. Sitting over here sweating.
All right. Um, and then, um, lastly, uh, Lieutenant Purcell touched on it, but we are so, so lucky and so fortunate to have Humane Society, all of our rescue groups, um, the larger ones, the smaller ones, they all play a huge role, um, in getting those positive outcomes. And, um, you know, the kind of an unknown is when we have an animal that it, that is ill or has a disease, um, that can shut down a shelter very, very quickly. And these rescue partners, they help immensely on finding a location for that animal or moving other animals quickly. And so, I mean, this partnership that's been fostered for many years, we just, we greatly appreciate, uh, working with them. Uh, and I know KHS is going through some transition, um, but we're still, we're still moving dogs through, dogs and cats, and so, uh, we just appreciate all their help, all the rescue partners in Humane Society. Thank you.
For the questions.
Appreciate the, the presentation and, and all the work going on. Um, also wanted to jump in a little more on a community challenge that was talked about, but it's not on there with the postal service. So the meeting with Lieutenant Purcell, I thought went really well, uh, and the postmaster, um, and Vice Mayor, correct me if I missed something or say something wrong, but it seems like the postmaster was willing to work with us. Um, also notify animal control if there's a, a issue, so that the council members in the district could know, um, that that issue is there before that neighborhood potentially loses, uh, mail service. And we've talked about, uh, ongoing meetings and conversations about that, so that hopefully impacts the neighborhood to be minimal on, uh, mail service.
Just the pronunciation of Chautauqua. That's the only thing you got.
Shataqua.
Looks like we got a, a topic for our next, next workshop meeting.
Let's get all these worked out. Greenwich.
Yeah.
Mayor, that's all we have.
All right. I have jokes about hiring Wichita State to look into Greenwich versus Greenwich. I'm gonna refer.
It's snowing outside.
It's, all right, so, uh, with that, we have, uh, is there any more discussion about workshop? See none. We will return from recess. Uh, now we are in our official meeting, again, having to return for recess. And I will make the motion, well, before I do, I just want to introduce Jenna. Uh, Jenna is our new intern, uh, for the semester. Hi Jenna.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. Uh, folks have, um, work or anything that she might be, uh, interested in doing, please feel free to introduce yourself and also, uh, uh, work with her. Uh, she's a student at Wichita State University and we welcome. With that, I'll make a motion that the, I moved up the city council recess into executive session for twenty minutes, uh, to receive information on a civil action pursuant to KSA 754319B for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in a attorney-client relationship about pending litigation, legal advice. The executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest. Uh, this motion would be to have executive session start at 12:20 and go till 12:40. However, the manager has gained the floor. Go for it.
Mayor, if at all possible, could you shrink that time in between? This room is needed at 12:45 and they have to reset the, the configuration. So if you could even just do five-minute break before you start again, do 12:15?
Do the math. 12:15. 12:35. I amend my motion, uh, to give us a five-minute break so we can go from 12:15 to 12:35, which means we will reconvene, uh, and then, uh, discuss continuation or closing of the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has a second. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. The guys have it, the guys do indeed have it. At 2:15, we will, 12:15, we will be, uh, in executive session for five minutes.